You ready, Jennifer?
Very good.
Well, good evening, everybody, and welcome to the April 19, 2022 meeting of the Edina City Council. Before we call the meeting to order, I want to let you all know that we're still trying to let people participate remotely for portions of the meeting tonight. People can call in during community comment relative to a matter that's not on the agenda this evening or scheduled for a future public hearing. If you want to participate in community comment, call 800-374-0221. Enter conference ID 1371973. It's on the screen right now. That's your telephone number, and that's your conference ID number. Give the operator your name, your street address, and your telephone number. Press *1 on your telephone keypad when you'd like to get into the queue to speak. And Ms. Bennerott, our Director of Communications, will introduce you to the city council when it's your turn to speak during community comment. So we're now going to call the meeting to order. Roll call, please, Ms. Ellison, Clerk Ellison.
Councilmember Anderson.
Here.
Councilmember Jackson.
Here.
Councilmember Pierce.
Here.
Councilmember Staunton.
Here.
Mayor Houghlin.
Here. Next matter before us this evening is a pledge of allegiance. Pledge of Allegiance.
To the flag of United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, folks. And now we are at the point where we're going to look at the meeting agenda and approve the meeting agenda. Is there a motion to approve the meeting agenda, as shown?
So moved.
Second. Member Jackson moves. Member Pierce seconds the adoption of the meeting agenda as published. Any further discussion? All those in favor of approval to the meeting agenda, say aye.
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 Opposed? Carried. Now we are back to community comment. If you want to put that number back on the screen, that would be helpful. Call in 800-374-0221, conference ID number 1371973. You can speak to the council about anything that's not on the agenda this evening or scheduled for a future public hearing. Director Bennerott, do we have anybody in the queue to speak during community comment?
We do, sir, but typically, we start with those in the room first.
We could.
That'll give me more time to queue up people.
All right. That's a good idea. Is there anyone in the audience, whether in chambers or out in the lobby, that would like to speak to the council about something that's not on the agenda this evening or scheduled for a future public hearing? Yes, ma'am.
Good evening. I had no idea I had such a wonderful audience. Thank you. My name is Nora Davis.
One second, Nora.
Okay.
Big crowd. You need a mic.
Yes. Thank you, thank you. My name is Nora Davis, and I live at 6921 South Dale Road in the Lake Cornelia neighborhood. And I have a feeling you have been receiving a lot of comments about the possibility of the fire station and parking ramp at Roslin Park. We adults have been talking about it, but I've realized that it's the kids that you haven't heard from. And kids are what parks are about. When I mentioned this to the kids in the neighborhood, I had wonderful smiles and bouncy, happy. Oh, I love the pool, and they are so excited about getting back to that pool. But I did ask them to put their thoughts, not so much in writing, but in drawing, and they did. And they've drawn wonderful things, a little bit of everything. This started out, there's a frog in the corner. This young man is an abstract artist. He can draw a little bit of everything, started with the frog. He's got trees and the water over here. Other kids picked up on the trees, love the trees. This is a cute little girl down in the corner. Other kids picked up, this is a really unique one. This was done by a three-month-old. And if you look closely, you can see her feet and her hands. The goldfish are her feet, and the trees are her hands. Her mom did have to help her, but her parents are excited about taking that little one to the pool. Other kids did basic. My neighbors across the street love the pool. They think it's just the best thing ever. And it was really traumatic, those years when it wasn't open. I know a lot of families bought pools to put in the back, but it just wasn't the same. And this is what those girls produced. And here is another one. This one is from Charlotte. Charlotte had a happy time. She's got, you know, great thoughts and lives close to Cornelia, and she too loves the pool. But I'm really concerned about the possibility of that fire station and parking ramp down there. It would really take away a lot from that pool. And remember that all families coming to Edina don't have access to green space, so it's really important that we keep our green space. And Roslin Park has to be, as so many people describe it, a jewel in our community, and it is. The ancient oaks, the wild fowl that you see down there, it's just precious to this community. In the last few weeks, there's been a lot of discussion about pollinators and Nomo and May and all these different things. And people are participating in a lot of different ways, including not cleaning up their gardens. I don't clean my garden right away this year, and I'm trying not to use this as an excuse, but I know they need that leaf and everything that's in that garden for protection. So I ask that you please remember that the parks are sacred spaces, and they shouldn't be taken away from the people. This is an opportunity for Edina to say, hey, no, we love our parks, we appreciate our parks, and this can help it make Edina greener. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Davis.
And these are for you.
All right. Yeah.
Don't be sad.
We'll let you take your basket home, and we'll...
The basket is mine.
Yeah.
As well as my little bee. I don't know if you can see the little bee, but he says, "Yay, Roslin!"
If you hand those all to the clerk, then we'll have those as part of the record. Thank you. Is there anyone else in council chambers or in the lobby that wishes to address the council? Here we go. Here comes our former park and rec director. He was with me at walk with the mayor on Saturday.
Bob Coteen. I live at 5016 William Avenue. I've lived there for 65 years. What I want to do is just give you an update on the Veterans Memorial Park, where now we've selected a 35th person to be added to that memorial. We started this memorial in 2012, and underneath the kiosk, we're going to put concrete, which you have for the wheelchairs. That has never been done before. Now we finally do it, and in that concrete, we'll have a big bronze star. And this, hopefully, will be all installed within the next month. The new fellow that we have been adding to it is Thomas... His name is Thomas Henderson. He lived in 6013 in Edina, and he lived there for a few years. He didn't really, but he graduated from Edina High School in 1959. His wife also graduated. He spent three services, three different times. He was in Vietnam, but after that, he served as a trainer in Mississippi during the Vietnam War. Our criteria said that as long as he was still during the war, he could still be added. One of the things that was kind of our committee and our criteria was kind of disbating was the fact that he is not included on the wall in Washington, D.C., although he was in the service during the military. But that still gives him the criteria in our committee that he still is eligible to be on the board. So at that time, last fall, we decided to do it. And I've been working on that for the last three, four months now to make sure that we have him listed on the KES. And the KES has to be redesigned because the 34 that we have on there just matches everything. So with that, I think that's what I'd like to do, is just have you update. We do have $70,000 in our memorial fund with the foundation, so about $15,000, we're going to spend on that. So we still have money in the future if we have to do some upgrade on that. Another thing is that there's only really three of us that are left on this committee: myself, Dick Lasikson, and Dick, and Frank Carterell. But Frank Carterell and myself, we're in that 90 category now, so I don't think we're going to be around much longer. But I think this committee should maybe have three or four people that would be there for the next umpteen years, because we're probably going to add more people in the future. And the kiosk is being designed so that we can add more people, but that's where we're at right now. So with that, I want to thank you. Thank you very much, council.
This other gentleman to the...
What?
What's the timing on doing this work?
This is doing right now. It'll be, we're hoping that the concrete will be installed within the next two or three weeks.
Okay.
And the only other thing that probably, I don't know for sure when it's going to be done, is the carving on the big granite stone. That's supposed to be done, that's a person that's been contacted who lives in St. Cloud, and so he's been notified, and he said he'll be coming down here, but he hasn't given me any dates yet.
All right. And then you and I talked on Saturday about, you know, how to recruit more members for the Veterans Memorial Committee, and one of the things we talked about was to get ahold of the list of people that attend the Veterans Dinner the night before the Fourth of July parade night.
That's a good idea. We have about 150 on that list that go to the Veterans Dinner. We have dinner before Fourth of July at Braemar usually, and I think we can use that as a mailing list, and I think from the city could mail out and say, okay, we're looking for new, younger people to be on this committee for the future. Although it's not a working committee anymore, it just, something comes up, like this particular person had came up last fall. Otherwise, the committee really is kind of, really isn't a working committee until somebody comes and attracts us and wants us to do something.
Okay. We'll see if we can find you some help. We'll see if we can find you some help.
Okay.
All right.
Thank you very much.
Thanks, Mr. Coteen. Anyone else in the audience wish to address the council on a matter that's not on the agenda this evening or otherwise scheduled for a future public hearing? All right. Anybody in the queue?
I do. Operator, will you please unmute the line of Mr. David Frankel? Mr. Frankel, please begin by stating your full name and address for the record once the operator announces that the line is open.
The line is now open.
David Frankel, 4510 Lakeview Drive, Edina. I have a question concerning the fire department mutual aid. I've brought this up a number of times at various meetings. Currently, mutual aid under state law, other fire departments have to come to the aid of the Edina Fire Department if they are so, if it's necessary. And right now, there's a list evidently of neighboring fire departments, St. Louis Park, Minnetoka, Eden Prairie, et cetera. And Minneapolis is literally on the bottom of the list to be called for a mutual aid fire in Edina. Keep in mind, Minneapolis Fire Department Station Number 22 is six tenths of a mile from 50th and France at 50th and Upton. That station is never called, and I've talked to them about it, and I've talked to an Assistant Minneapolis Fire Department Fire Chief, and it's pretty common for none of the suburbs to call Minneapolis for mutual aid. I'm not sure what the reason is there. Right now, Edina City Hall, the closest fire department of any fire department is that fire station at 50th and Upton, and they'd be the last fire station to be called if there was a fire at City Hall. And right now, with the limited fire support northeast Edina, I don't understand why the Minneapolis Fire Department isn't the number-one fire department to be called on the list. There's a number of interesting parts of the 911 coverage. For example, if there's a car or pedestrian accident on any street bordering Edina and Minneapolis, like France Avenue and Zerxes, the 911 dispatch calls the Minneapolis Fire Department before they call the Edina Fire Department. But in that same block, if there's a fire in a building in Edina, Edina Fire Department gets called. Also, keep in mind, Minneapolis Fire Department Station Number 2 is in Edina every day at least once, doing grocery shopping at Lund's at 50th and France. I don't understand why there's not a better working relationship between the Minneapolis Fire Department and the Edina Fire Department. In the past, they worked off at separate frequencies and had different radios, and that has changed. They both work off the same Motorola radios and frequencies so they could easily communicate with each other. I'd like to know, since I live in an area that is closer to the Minneapolis Fire Department at 50th and Upton, why are they not number-one on the mutual aid list? And I'm probably running long on time here, but the other thing is Minneapolis Fire Department used to have a closest-call program with the Richfield Fire Department, where the closest fire department was called to a fire regardless of the mutual aid issue, regardless of which department. Why can't Edina have a closest-call 911 with the city of Minneapolis? So if there's a fire at Lund's, you don't have to send a truck from Edina Station Number 1 all the way over on Tracy to come within six tenths of a mile of the Minneapolis Fire Department at 50th and Upton? I'd like to know why, and this is strictly politics, both departments have the same training, same trucks, they're all qualified, why Minneapolis is not called to northeast Edina? The issue of a fire station, a new fire station is years off, and it still will not affect northeast Minneapolis or northeast Edina. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Frankel. Anyone else?
I do not have any other callers at this time, so I think you can move on.
All right. Thank you. Yes, please come forward. This is for community comment?
Yes.
Yes, please. Thank you, Member Pierce.
Okay. If you could zoom in on... Yeah, if you could zoom in on the image, please.
All right, go ahead.
Thank you. Roberta Castellano.
You could wait for a green light, too, but go ahead and introduce yourself, please.
Roberta Castellano, 4854 France Avenue South. And I'm following up somewhat on the last meeting where I submitted a handout, and Acting Mayor Kevin Staunton even asked for it, and I got an email the next day from City Clerk Sharon Allison that we're not going to post it to the agenda packet, and she told, and she didn't even offer to return it to me before discarding it. So I was upset about that. That was about Fire Station Number 2. So it just feels like that was kind of a farcical experience. So then, I submitted two questions in Better Together Edina, and those were responded to. I submitted those, I believe it was on April 8. But following that, on April 15, I submitted two comments, and it appears that the settings in Better Together Edina were changed in that intervening period, and my comments were sent to a black hole. They did not get published. I did not get the auto-email response confirming receipt of my comments, and I'm very upset about that. Could you zoom in on these, please, Jennifer?
Just the maps.
Just the maps. And one of my comments, I'll focus on one because there's very limited time. The comment over here on the right, or the, excuse me, the map here on the right was a map image that I submitted in Better Together Edina, and this is from the staff's presentation slideshow, and it shows Fire Station Number 1, Response Time, Anticipated Response Time, it's called, and then 76th Street Potential Site, Anticipated Response Time. So once again, this was in the staff slideshow. It was presented by Chief Slama at the March 31 public meeting at the Public Works Department. This map is from the Five Bugle Study, showing the existing stations. And what you'll notice is that what Five Bugle, Five Bugle shows for like the northwest quadrant response is quite a bit different from what was in the staff slideshow. And so I will just read my comments that I submitted along with these two maps. I think I might want to get it out here. All right. "In spite of the results reported in the Five Bugle Study, the city is only modeling for two fire stations in this current selection process. Why not three? Also, I note with interest how much better Fire Station Number 1 on Tracy Avenue performs in the response time maps in the staff slideshow, March 31 neighborhood meeting at Public Works, see map on the right, versus in the Five Bugle Study, see map on the left. Personally, I like to start the visual examination by comparing differences in the northwest quadrant. Moreover, in the slideshow's response time maps, the response time for two stations is so much better than what Five Bugles reported that a person looking only at the slideshow might conclude that Edina does not need a third fire station. Frankly, this discrepancy leads me to question the city's report that Roslin Park has a slight edge over 76th Street, and I also find it ironic that the city would guilt us to favor Roslin Park while at the same time the city abandoned modeling for a third fire station, even though three fire stations would provide for far superior response times. And the planning should model for the best response for three fire station locations. I strongly urge the city council to choose the 76th Street location."
Thank you, Ms. Castellano. I'd let you go over your three-minute mark quite a bit, so if you could wrap up your comments, that would be appreciated.
I'm going to submit this to you. This includes the other comment that I submitted that went into a black hole as well, and I'm asking that you help get these comments into the Better Together Report that is put together for the May 4 reading. And I will also follow up by sending them to the council electronically via email with the hopes that I actually get it to you.
Very good.
Thank you.
If you hand those to the clerk, that would be helpful.
Yes, I will.
Thank you. Anyone else in the audience who wishes to address the council on a matter not on the agenda this evening or scheduled for a future public hearing? Did we have anybody else come online, Director Bennerott? Okay. Every council meeting following community comment, that particular evening, we have the city manager's response to community comments that were made at the prior meeting, and that is the usual practice that we have, so the comments you heard tonight will be addressed at the next council meeting. Manager Neal, anything that you wanted to address relative to the last council meeting?
Yes, we had 10 speakers at community comment at the previous meeting. All 10 of them were speaking about aspects of the Fire Station 2 project and comments about its desirability as a location, particularly Roslin Park, and whether or not the city staff had examined all of the different options available to us. There were some questions that asked us to do some additional investigations, so we are working on that. And we are working on the final recommendation for the council. We plan to make that to you on May 4. So a number of the questions that were posed there will be answered in that recommendation that we present to you the evening of May 4.
All right. Very good. And that covered all of the comments?
It did.
Yeah. Okay. Very good. All right. Next item on our agenda this evening is the consent agenda, which has several different items on it. Is there anyone on the council that wishes to remove an item from the consent agenda? If not, I'll entertain a motion to adopt a consent agenda in its totality?
So moved.
Second.
Got a motion by Member Anderson, second by Member Staunton, to adopt the consent agenda in a single motion. Any further discussion? All those in favor of adopting the items shown on the consent agenda in a single motion, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Carried. And now we're on to special recognitions and presentations, and we have a couple of proclamations to take care of this evening. The first one is Arbor Day, which is going to be April 29, 2022 this year, and we've got Luther Overholt, our city forester here, who's got some, I think, some interesting information to impart to folks. And I'll read the proclamation, and I think all of you in the room will be surprised to, at least I was when I first read this several years ago, was that Arbor Day, the planting of trees started in Nebraska. And I don't know how much progress they've made in Nebraska, but when I drive through Nebraska, it looks like they got a lot of trees to plant yet. But here's the proclamation, Arbor Day. Incidentally, Luther Overholt did just a wonderful job for the city on Saturday. The students in our community had a climate summit at the high school, and Luther was there, and I think the biggest round of applause that morning, what didn't deal with greenhouse, or that afternoon, didn't deal with greenhouse gas reduction strategies. It dealt with Luther telling people we were going to plant 1,000 trees in Edina, and he'll talk a little bit about that here pretty quick. So here's the proclamation, folks. Arbor Day, April 29, 2022. Whereas in 1872, J. Sterling Morton proposed to the Nebraska Board of Agriculture that a special day be set aside for the planting of trees. And whereas this holiday, called Arbor Day, was first observed with the planting of more than a million trees in Nebraska. And whereas forest soils prevent flooding and reduce stormwater by capturing and storing rainwater and snowmelt, which is then slowly released to our lakes, streams, and groundwater; and whereas trees and forests improve our physical health by cleaning the air, reducing exposure to the sun's UV rays, and decreasing temperatures during the summertime; and whereas one tree provides $62,000 worth of pollution control over a period of 50 years; and whereas trees can reduce the erosion of our precious topsoil by wind and water, cut heating and cooling costs, moderate temperature, clean the air, produce life-giving oxygen, and provide habitat for wildlife; and whereas forests create high-quality drinking water by acting as a natural filter; and whereas Edina is proud of the beautiful shade trees which grace our homes and public places, and now therefore, the city council of the city of Edina, Minnesota, does hereby proclaim April 29, 2022, as Arbor Day in the city of Edina, Minnesota, and calls upon the spirited and foresighted citizens of Edina to plant trees now for our pleasure and that of future generations. Is there a motion to adopt the proclamation regarding Arbor Day?
So moved.
Second.
Got a motion by Member Jackson, second by Member Pierce, to adopt the Arbor Day proclamation. Any further discussion? All those in favor of adopting the proclamation for Arbor Day being designated April 29, 2022, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Carried. Mr. Overholt, welcome. Let's tell all of our fellow residents a little bit about what you have going on in the next few months.
Yeah. Well, thank you, Mayor and council. It is all in part to you guys that I've got all these great plans coming up. So this year, the Next Gen Tree Program is kicking off, and with some of the funds from the American Rescue Plan Act, I will be planting 1,000 new trees in the city of Edina. 250 of those trees will be on private property. We're focusing on multifamily unit housing and affordable housing. The majority of those housing units are in the southeast quadrant of the city. After doing our climate action plan last year in the city, we now know that the southeast quadrant of the city does have the lowest tree canopy out of the entire city. The tree canopy in that area is around 12% to 13%. The average in the city is 30%, and, you know, neighborhoods like Country Club are closer to 40%. And so we're focusing our plantings in that area just to help with urban heat island effect and to, you know, be able to plant trees on property that's usually difficult to plant on. And so, you know, they may not have the funds or the resources to go into planting new trees at these properties, and so, you know, we're focusing on those areas. The kickoff this year for our Next Gen Tree planting and our Arbor Day celebration this year will be on May 6, so it's a week after the actual day of Arbor Day. But my partner in doing this, I do have some help, is Tree Trust. But my partner in doing this, I do have some help, is Tree Trust. They're already very busy on Arbor Day, so we're doing it the week after. We're meeting at 10:00 a.m. at Roslin, and we will be planting 200 new trees at Roslin Park that day. And so I'd like to invite, you know, the mayor and council, all of you to come join us. It's going to be quite the task. I'm really excited about it, though we're planting over 20 new, you know, varieties of trees there as well. So we have a great diversity of trees that we're putting in, just making sure that we don't have the same issues with Emerald Ash Bore. You know, after Dutch Elm, we planted all ash trees. Now we have an insect that's going after all the ash, and so we're planting a wide variety of new trees at the park to ensure that our future forest will be here for, you know, at least the next 100 years.
Good. And what time is that event?
We'll be starting at 10:00 and going until all the trees are planted. Talking with Tree Trust, they think will be done around 1:00. I'm planning on being there until 3:00. I think it might take a little longer, but, you know, my staff and I will be out the day before. We'll auger all the holes. And so, you know, you'll just have to kind of, you know, scoop the dirt out. We'll have, you know, shovels and wheelbarrows and, you know, mulch and everything provided. You just need to show up with, you know, gloves, closed-toed shoes, clothes you don't mind getting dirty. And, you know, when we start off, we'll be in a group, we'll plant a tree altogether. If you don't know how to plant a tree, that's fine. We'll show you how to plant a tree. You'll know how to plant a tree for the rest of your life after we show you how to do it. And, you know, it'll be a, you know, great event for the entire community. You know, families are encouraged to come. It's for all, we have jobs for all ages, you know, watering the trees, mulching them, you know, kids can help with that while we do, you know, the planting with, you know, larger groups, so.
Good. Are you asking folks to meet you in the main parking lot, then?
We'll be meeting at the pavilion.
At the pavilion?
Up there, so we have that for the day. And then there'll also be a white Tree Trust tent. They'll have a tent there with, you know, water and snacks and stuff like that. But, yeah, we'll be up at the pavilion, and then we'll kind of go out from there and plant.
All right, great. Any council members have any questions for Mr. Overholt? All right, good. And thanks for being there Saturday, too. That was important for the...
No, it was, yeah, it was a great event. Thank you.
Everybody there, to have you there as well. All right, thanks. Next, we're going to have a report. We get this annually from Andrew Cipione, our transportation planner. He's going to report out on the Pedestrian and Cyclist Safety Fund expenditures during 2021. And you might explain, we've got a great audience here of our fellow residents, you might explain to them what the source of that funding is that we use for sidewalks and trails as part of your presentation. Thank you.
I plan to do just that. Thank you, Mayor, members of council. Tonight, I will be presenting on the 2021 PAX Pedestrian and Cyclist Safety Fund Report. I'll give a brief overview of what exactly the PAX Fund is, go into detail about what expenditures were in 2021, the projects that were constructed last year, and then give a little preview of the projects that are yet to come this year and next year. So the Pedestrian and Cyclist Safety Fund, or the PAX Fund, was approved by City Council in December of 2012. It's a revenue that comes from utility franchise fees on customers of Excel and CenterPoint Energy. It generates roughly $1.2 million annually. That is dedicated exclusively to improvements to Edina's non-motorized transportation facilities. So that includes like what you see in the picture here, bike lanes, sidewalks, associated signage and pavement markings. So in 2021, we had about $1.3 million that were available in that fund. Of that, we spent a little over $800,000. 70% of that is on new facilities, as you can see in the table here. We spent about $15,000 to maintain some of our existing pet and bike facilities, another $13,000 on the citywide speed limit reduction project, and then about $50,000 on final payments for previous projects. Under the administrative section, we spent about $52,000 on professional services. That's mostly design work for future projects that we have done by consultants. $7,000 or $8,000 on maintenance and miscellaneous supplies related to pet and bike infrastructure. And then my salary, the transportation planner's salary, also comes out of that fund. So going over quickly the projects that were constructed in 2021, we have the Hanson Road and West 56th Streets sidewalks that were built as part of a railway reconstruction project, shown by number A here on the map. And then we have sidewalks on Beard Avenue and Fuller Street in the Creek Knoll neighborhood that was also completed as part of a railway reconstruction project. We have some new shared-use paths along Highlands Park. We paid for an overlay of a shared-use path along Gleason from Vernon Avenue to Nine Mile Creek Culvert. And then we replaced a rapid rectangular flashing beacon on Lincoln Drive to south of Londonderry Road. In addition, as I mentioned before, the PAX Fund last year was used to fund the citywide speed limit reduction initiative or the Drive 25 campaign. So that included sign panels, posts, and promotional materials associated with that initiative. Looking ahead to this year, the PAX Fund is, we're planning to pay for new sidewalks and bike lanes as part of the Blake Road Reconstruction Project that goes from the city limits to Scriber Road. In addition, in the Morningside neighborhood, we're looking to build a, construct a bike boulevard on Grinds Avenue from 44th to 42nd Street, as well as pay for replacement of existing sidewalk within that neighborhood project. France Avenue, probably one of our bigger projects for next year, we're looking at filling in that sidewalk gap between Fuller Street and Highway 62 on the east side, and we're coordinating that with Hennepin County and Metro Transit, as that facility will be important to support the E-line Bus Rapid Transit Service. Another big project that we're working on designing is a shared-use path/sidewalk on McCrory Trail that will stretch from Valley View Road to Gleason Road in the Indian Hills/Indian Trails neighborhood. And then we have some sidewalks, the trails that are proposed with the Bristol and Mayville Park/Lindmar Basin Stormwater Project in the South Cornelia neighborhood. Looking ahead to 2023, again, in the second half of the Morningside neighborhood, we're looking at sidewalk on Lynn Avenue and Grinds Avenue, as well as continuing that bike boulevard up to the border with St. Louis Park. The PAX Fund is contributing to the Vernon Avenue Bridge Project that the Hennepin County is leading from over the CP Rail, roughly between Interlock and Boulevard and Highway 100. We'll also be working on some improvements around Cornelia Elementary School. This includes sidewalk, shared-use paths, some intersection improvements. The majority of that work is going to be funded by a Safe Roads to School Infrastructure Grant that we received last year. And then finally, we have some shared-use paths on France Avenue between Minnesota Drive and 56th Street. That is work that we are coordinating with Hennepin County's improvement project on that section of France. And with that, I'll stand for any questions.
Questions for Mr. Cipione? Comments? Yes.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. When we looked at the 4040 West 70th, we talked about some things on Valley View Road and kind of getting a pathway there. Is that on your radar, or where are we at on that?
Yeah, I could speak to that. We have that scheduled for, it's basically a street reconstruction, adding a shared-use trail, and then working with that neighborhood to decide fencing and planting, and we got that scheduled for 2023.
Okay.
And that was to be in paid for out of TIF funds that were programmed for a different project.
Okay, thank you.
Other questions? Comments? You've done some fine work for the city this, and you've got some great projects coming up in the next couple of years, so keep up the good work.
Thank you.
Thank you. Now we've got another mayor's proclamation, and that is declaring the week of April 10, 2022 through Saturday, April 16, 2022. The mayor's proclaiming a proclamation regarding National Public Safety Telecommunicator Week. And that is in recognition of some of our dispatch services. So I'm going to read that proclamation now. Whereas emergencies can occur at any time that require police, fire, or emergency medical services, and whereas when an emergency occurs, the prompt response of police officers, firefighters, and paramedics is critical to the protection of life and preservation of property. And whereas the safety of our police officers, firefighters, and paramedics is dependent upon the quality and accuracy of information obtained from citizens who telephone or text the Edina Communications Center. And whereas public safety telecommunicators are the first and most critical contact our citizens have with emergency services. And whereas public safety telecommunicators are the single vital link for our police officers, firefighters, and paramedics by monitoring their activities by radio, providing them information, ensuring their safety. And whereas public safety telecommunicators of the Edina Communications Center have contributed substantially to the apprehension of the criminals, suppression of fires, and treatment of patients. And whereas each public safety telecommunicator has exhibited compassion, understanding, and professionalism during the performance of their job in the past year. Now therefore, the mayor of the City of Edina hereby proclaim the week of April 10 through the 16, 2022, as National Public Safety Telecommunicator Week in the City of Edina in honor of the men and women whose diligence and professionalism keep our state and citizens safe. I'm going to ask the council to adopt this proclamation as well. Is there a motion to adopt this proclamation?
So moved.
Second. Member Stockton moves. Member Anderson seconds the adoption of the National Public Safety Telecommunicator Week proclamation. We have Lieutenant Aaron White with us this evening and our dispatch supervisor, Janelle Harris, to accept this proclamation. Any further discussion with regard to the proclamation? All those in favor of adoption of the proclamation have stated, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Carried. Well, good evening.
Good evening. Thank you, Mayor and Council. Good to be here. And I want to thank the audience that came for dispatch recognition. My, this is a good crowd. My colleagues over here told me it's possible they're here for another issue as well, but we'll take it, because I'm going to be brief and just say that we're really proud of our independent dispatch center here in Edina. We don't just serve Edina Police and Fire, but of course, we have a great long-term partnership with our neighbors in Richfield, Police and Fire. And I will say, before turning it over to the real dispatch person here, that it is the foundation of our great public safety services. It really is. And I grabbed some, I stole some of her numbers. 2021, 114,344 phone calls came into our dispatch center, of which 45,828 were emergency calls. That's 126 911 calls a day. And of course, they don't all happen on one day. There's a day in January where you get like four, and there's a day in July where we get, you know, 500 of them, it would seem. But it's a truly remarkable job, and I like to, I love talking about it because you see us, right, in the uniforms and out on the street and everything, but we absolutely could not do it without our dispatch center. And by running the center we do here in Edina independently, we do it faster, we provide a higher level of service than anybody else in the metro, I think. Hopefully, none of them are listening, but 98% of the time, we answer your 911 call within 10 seconds. And that's awesome. And we do that usually with two people working up there 24/7. And of course, we talk about phone calls because the stats are so important, but as a police officer, I've got this somewhere on here, I've got this radio. And that's what's important to us. All the responders in Edina and Richfield Police and Fire, when something doesn't go right, I'm counting on my ability to, in an instant, get that help I need, and for them to see me on the map and to know what I'm doing and to be checking on me. So I personally, and on behalf of the Police Department, want to thank every one of our dispatchers. We're a little understaffed. They worked really hard. And so thanks for the opportunity to thank them. And then I'll turn it over to Janelle Harris, our dispatch supervisor.
All right, thanks, Lieutenant White. Ms. Harris, welcome.
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor Hovland. Thank you, council. So as supervisor of the 911 Dispatch Center, I would like to thank you for recognizing the work of our 911 dispatchers who recently did just celebrate National Telecommunicators Week. We had a lot of decorations, a lot of treats. They've had a lot of sugar. But that's why we answer our phone calls a bit. No, I'm just kidding. So this past year, our 911 dispatchers, who often are recognized as the first first responders, received both emergent and non-emergent phone calls, and these calls fall in the range of many accidental missedials, all the way to the most serious of emergencies like robberies and structure fires and cardiac arrests. Every day, our dispatchers are making lifesaving decisions within seconds. To paint a picture of a typical shift, our 911 center will staff two to three dispatchers who work at consoles composed of five monitors fed from four computers and running more than 10 software systems at any one time. The person sitting at the controls must know how to operate all the numerous technology networks, an elaborate multi-line telephone system, a statewide shared radio system, a local computer-aided dispatch system, and multiple record management systems, along with dozens of auxiliary components. In our highly technical environment, not one of these systems stays the same for very long, making us truly skilled change agents. So our dispatchers are trained to perform heroic acts over the phone with very quick recognition, specialized instructions, persistence, and most of all, empathy, committing to protect the personal safety and property of those in the community. And by doing this, they face challenges of physical and emotional stressors every day. The City of Edina, in my opinion, employs some of the most dedicated and professional 911 dispatchers in the state of Minnesota. And I hope I have conveyed how hard these staff members work to maintain our incredibly high customer service and public safety standards. I am so, so proud of their dedication, their compassion, and their service, and I'm very grateful for this leadership's recognition of those same qualities. So on behalf of all the dispatchers who couldn't be here tonight, thank you again for this very meaningful recognition.
Ms. Harris, you couldn't be a better representative of our dispatchers. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Hold on a minute. I was thinking while you were talking, I know that many of you know that about three weeks ago, I was in Israel for a week with about a dozen mayors. And so I think I was in three or four dispatch centers in cities around Tel Aviv. None of them are on the second floor of a building. All of them are two stories down and underground.
Yeah.
And sometime I'll come up and I'll show you some of the film footage you took of their dispatch centers, just so you can see what some of the things are that they worry about as well.
Oh, definitely.
It was pretty fascinating.
Oh, I imagine. We would really enjoy that.
I'll come up and visit someday.
That'd be great. Anytime.
All right.
Thank you very much.
Thanks again. That concludes the special recognitions and presentations portion of the agenda. We're now going to move to reports and recommendations. And the first matter we have there is something we used to put on the Consent Agenda, but we like to call out these folks that donate to the City of Edina. And so we put the resolution that accepts donations from time to time in the reports and recommendations portion of the agenda, so it would be easier to give these people a great shout-out. Is there a motion to adopt Resolution 2022-40?
So moved.
Member Jackson moves. Member Pierce seconds the adoption of Resolution 2022-40, which accepts donations on behalf of the City of Edina. We need a supermajority of the council to accept these donations by state law. So we've got a motion to second. Any further discussion? All those in favor of adopting Resolution 2022-40, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Carried. This reporting period, we've got a nice gift to the fire department from resident Connie Carino, which was a $100 gift card to juries. And then in the Park and Rec Department, we had many donors. Jill and Steve Khan, $3,200 for a beautiful bench at Roslin Park in memory of one of their relatives. Maria Klein, $350 for a Kentucky coffee tree at Browndale Park. That must be a specialty, Luther. Andy Warzak, $3,500, multiple trees at Strachauer Park. And Peter and Elizabeth McDonough, $17,000 transplanting trees at Hankerson Open Greenspace, thanks to all those residents of our community that care about making Edina an ever better place to live. All right, next on the reports and recommendations portion of the agenda is the potential approval of the Traffic Safety Report, and our Director of Engineering, Chad Milner, has this matter. Director Milner, welcome.
Thank you, Mayor, members of the council. I'm here to speak to the March 1, 2022 Traffic Safety Report. I believe there was members last council meeting that wanted to pull Item B2, so I guess I'd like to confirm that is the item, and then I'd be happy to speak to that and answer any questions you have. I've got a few stats and stuff I want to discuss, but I just want to confirm that's the one item you want to pull from the report to discuss today.
And that was regarding concerns on cut-through traffic on West 49th and 48th Streets.
Exactly.
Yeah, and that was, because I was absent, we wanted to have a conversation about this.
Thanks for that. And then we'll consider the full report when we get to potential approval for the, because none of the report was approved last week. So speaking of Item B2, I just want to take a step back and talk on three things. I want to talk about the data that was in there, the request, the big picture from a city perspective, and then kind of a little bit, just a few key points on speed bumps that were requested. So I want to first note that the complaint was increased traffic and speeds. If you recall, I was up in front of this council in 2017 studying the Northeast Traffic Studies, and I provided some feedback on the areas we've studied over the years. And that's Country Club, 50th and France, White Oaks, Morningside, and Arden Park. And we had traffic concerns as far back as 1950, and we've had many studies since 1993. So many recommendations at the local county and state level, some implementation. And then the speed and volume data shows that there's kind of mixed data out there depending on when we measure it. So just another tidbit is that historically, on 50th Street, the data we show, it's actually trending downward on traffic volumes at... trending downward on traffic volumes at very, three different locations on 50th Street. It kind of peaked at late 1990s. And then this chart goes through 2017, the last time I presented the data. And again, we have multi-jurisdictional feedback in this area when you look at 50th and France. We have Edina on the west, Minneapolis on the east, and Hennebun County controls France Avenue. So when we look at the data and the requests, so increased traffic and speeds, the green arrow, that's 48th Street, we actually saw a decrease in traffic. So I'd say that rent down 130 vehicles per day from the last traffic counts. So that green arrow, the yellow area is 49th Street. So that one, we did see an increase of about 400 cars per day. And then the blue is Maple. So if cars are coming in those two streets, they have to go out somewhere. And actually, Maple, the traffic volumes have been flat. And when I look at the speeds, 48th Street, the speeds have been consistent. 49th Street, it actually has a 1 mile per hour reduction from the last time we studied it. And then Maple, I don't have the speeds. But when I think about the, if we have a delta of 300 cars between those two streets, they have to come out somewhere. And they're not coming out Maple. So that, to me, tells me it's not cut-through traffic, which is some of the concerns of the people that we've talked to. So in my opinion, with COVID, people doing many more deliveries, these cars are entering the neighborhood and maybe heading to the north and out some other streets, or they're just associated with the people that live in this specific area in the specific neighborhood. This street's also designated as a local connector in our Living Streets Plan. So we also want to be careful about doing something on one street that may affect the other streets in that same designation if there isn't an issue that the data is showing that there's an issue. So there is 25 miles of additional local connector streets in Edina. Speed bumps, just a quick few points on that. There was a petition in front of you in October of last year for a speed bump on Wooddale Avenue, and that was denied. These were kind of the key points of why we do not leave in speed bumps and humps in Edina. There's a cost and additional maintenance concerns with winter maintenance and trying to snowplow. There's EMS vehicle impacts and the speed with which they can respond. Environmental impacts. People stop and go at those things all the time, and that's acceleration and the gas mileage and our carbon footprint, that's increased. Limited effectiveness. It's really only affecting the speeds in the cars at the actual feature. So it's only at that feature. People tend to go faster and keep driving the rest of the block. And they're noisy. Cars hitting those bumps are, their tires and suspensions are making that noise, and it's always at the house or houses right at the speed hump. So I'd be happy to stand for any questions, but staff does not believe that the data supports that there is an issue, that there is increased traffic and speeds. We do not believe that. And if the recommendation was to study speed humps and bumps, that would be our last recommendation. We would want to do other structural things like plant more trees on the boulevards, narrow curbs and gutters, do those more structural things before we would actually do speed bumps. That'd be like a last case scenario where we've tried everything else. So with that, I would stand for questions on this specific item. And then I would ask for approval on either a portion of or the entire traffic safety report from March 1st.
All right. Standby. Thank you. Questions for Director Milner? Yes, Member Jackson.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. So the report that, or the email that I got was talking about the increase since Nolan Mainz had opened. And I think that was after 2017. Am I correct?
You are correct.
So the request that we got was to do an additional traffic study now, because what they had seen is that it had doubled since Nolan Mainz had opened. And then temporary traffic bumps or speed bumps, to sort of see what the effect would be. What, can you tell us about temporary speed bumps, what that is? It's not something I'm familiar with.
Well, first, the Market Street project was completed after 2017. We did collect additional traffic data. That's what we're sharing here tonight. So we did do the count. So we know that one street went down, one went up, and one stayed flat. So the cars are coming in or going out on 49th, but there's no, you know, there's no impacts on Maple Street. So I don't, that doesn't support cut-through traffic. You can buy temporary speed bumps where you drill them into the pavement. We could install those and then measure the impacts on speed and traffic after those. The concern is if, you know, that's only typically a summer measure, we can't do that in the winter because we need to snowplow the street. So if council really wants a study done, I would ask that the neighborhood does a petition to see what the support is of a study and then study more along the lines of what we did on 76th Street or 72nd Street, where we put delineators, these vertical delineators for curb bump outs, and see if that impacts traffic and speed. Because the concern is people, cars coming in, if there's an increase in traffic, which the data isn't showing, but we could measure whether or not those vertical delineators keep cars from entering that point of 48th, France, and Maple. But I'd want support of the neighborhood to study that versus just one person making that request.
Okay. Thank you. The other thing is, I was actually using Google Maps to get someplace in uptown. And it directed me, instead of going through 50th and France or on Market Street, to go Maple Road and 49th. Is it possible that we could contact some of these services and make sure that they're not directing people down a residential street and have them use that Market Street, which is designed to be the cut-through for 50th and France?
We've tried to contact Google in the past with no response. We have ways that we can submit data to that when there's road closures, we can do that. But to designate which streets you can and cannot drive on, they're all public streets. We cannot close one, just, I think the impact would be they'd go to a different local street. They'd go to Arden or Sunnyside. So Google, we can't. Ways we can do road closures, but I wouldn't recommend either to try to keep traffic out.
Okay. Well, thank you. That's interesting information.
Other questions? Yep. Member Pierce.
Thanks, Mr. Mayor. So I got a problem. If I'm experiencing something in the neighborhood that the data doesn't show, then there's a disconnect someplace. And it could be that if I live on Maple Street or Maple Road, I don't, I'm totally just framing this. Maybe I don't understand what the definition of cut-through traffic is. Maybe the way I think about connector activity is different than the way it's defined. When I received those emails, I actually responded to two neighbors, and I said, thank you for sending me that because I cut through Maple Road every week. And I do. If I am trying to get to the cleaners, I will cut through Maple as opposed to trying to go up to 50th and turn left. I told manager Neil, I was trying to get to Red Cow one night at 5 o'clock. Why would I do that? But I was trying to. I cut through on Maple Road. And so I think what you're describing is the volume of traffic maybe doesn't rise to the level of where we would consider it a problem. But whenever there's a disconnect between what somebody experiences and what the data shows, somebody has to connect those two things and explain what discrepancies we're seeing. So that's, that's one thing I would, I would say. And that's, in general, that's a question. And then where Member Jackson was going, what that would lead me to do is say, what other things can we do to abate the issue that I'm experiencing if it's not traffic lights, if it's not, you know, bumps in the street, those types of things? There has to be some way to explain so people understand what's really going on. And then we can look at, are there other things that we can do to abate what those community members are feeling?
Sure. To go to your point of the disconnect, I think that's a communication where staff has to communicate with the people that have emailed or requested. And we can talk to Nick Baller to see what data he's provided them. To do a true cut-through study, we'd have to have cameras up, and you're tracking a license plate here, and you're just trying to figure out where it comes out. And that was done one time in this neighborhood in Country Club with that project in 2006 and '07, when traffic was an issue, where you tried to match license plates where they came in, where they went out. And you just think about the number of cameras and the data and that. It's a pretty extensive thing to really determine. Because when I take a step back, we could just look at the number of properties here, and we know that Edina generates about 12, seven to 12 trips per day per house. So that's the first thing I usually do is just count the houses in the district and see how many. And if we're 5% above, then, you know, it's all the services that are providing the delivery services in there. So I think there's different ways to communicate that disconnect. Second piece, the other options are curb bump down, curb neck downs, which we proposed on Creek Valley, remember, last year? And we wanted to do that as a staff, and the neighborhood didn't support it, and we didn't go forward. So we've tried to do some of that on some other streets. So that would be one. I'd first want to study it with temporary measures. Landscaping in boulevards that slows cars down. But the thing to remember is if we put our finger in one of these like a leaky bucket, it's going to come out somewhere else. And then Arden's going to feel it and Sunnyside. And so I don't think we can just do one thing on just two or three streets. That's why we keep to looking at this area as from an entire Northeast Edina Transportation Studies. That's what we've been doing. Because if we do just one thing, it's going to pop out somewhere else and create an issue. So it has to be all in concert with each other.
Yep. Director Milner, so I appreciate what you just explained. I've gotten tons of feedback about city staff, and I've shared some of this with you before. Community members have said, wow, that guy, Chad, he definitely listens, and he does a great job of helping people understand what's going on and just the approach that you take. I think something like that needs to happen here because what you described sounds logical to me. And being able to explain the value of what it would cost to do a more extensive study, the, how, what a burden it might be on the community to have cameras everywhere to track traffic. The way you think about here, numbers per household, and how you correlate that to traffic. I just think understanding those types of elements more would actually be where I would start. Because I go back to, if I'm experiencing something that the data doesn't suggest is happening, there's a disconnect. And to start with, just explaining, all right, here's, snap the line, here's where we're starting from. These are the definitions, right? This is what, this is how I interpret the data, to just help people on that street understand what's going on. Because I apologize to those neighbors for cutting through on Maple Road, because I do. I do. So that's all.
Yeah. Yeah, we can offer that to the person or persons that submitted these, and we'll see if we can have a neighborhood meeting and have this discussion. So thank you for that suggestion.
All right. Yes, Member Anderson.
Yeah, thank you. Director Milner, I just wanted to mention one thing to you, and that is, is that we have a significant level of pending development on the Minneapolis side of 50th and France. And I'm suspecting that that is going to cause that much more cut-through traffic in that direct area. So I just urge you to take that into consideration. It may not be anything that we can do something about today, but I sense that this is going to be a building problem through that, especially during the construction time. So there may be no immediate remedy. Still, I just wanted to bring it forward.
Thank you.
Just a couple of comments from me. I'm looking at the report and looking at data, 49th Street data from 2014, 2018, and 2021. Average daily volume in 2014 was 424 on 49th. So that'd be between Maple and France. During Nolan Mainz's construction in 2018, the volume went up like we expected to go up, but it more than doubled to 923 a day. And now it's back down to 842 a day. What I remember us discussing during the approval process and during the construction of Nolan Mainz was that when we got a little bit of distance between the completion of that project, the occupancy of the apartments, and the businesses getting up and going, that we were going to come back, and that we owed it to the neighbors to come back and take a look at the overall area and see if there were some traffic improvements that we could make. And I think the time has come to do that. I mean, because we've got people contacting us that we know in our community that live on 49th Street, for example, that are telling me that the PMP has gotten quite a bit worse, that people are coming southbound France, and they want to go westbound 50th. The easy thing to do is to turn right by Robert Acosta Lano's house on the 49th and head over to Maple, and then over to 50th and make a right turn and head west. And so I think, I think we, I think we owe it to everybody that lives in the neighborhood, especially with, as Member Anderson says, we get other projects coming over which we have no control on the Minneapolis side, to think about how we're going to not only calm traffic, but also maybe affect the volume. So I'd be in favor of, if the neighbors want to file a petition, I'm sure they'd think about it. I think it's a good idea. But I think on our own motion, we ought to think about it, on our own volition. The second thing is, on 49th Street, which has become a lot higher volume street, the sidewalks are real intermittent. I mean, there's a little piece here, a little piece there, but they're, on 49th Street, people are walking in the street. There should be sidewalks on both sides of the street on 49th Street.
Sure.
And so Mr. Cipione should be adding that to his list, frankly, to take a look at. Because that's, that is about as urban as our community gets outside of multifamily housing. I think people, that people deserve to have a sidewalk over there where they can safely separate themselves from car traffic, just like we did on Maple Road years ago.
Yep.
Okay. That's all I got. Anybody else that caused anything? Anybody else want to add?
So what's our motion, then?
So what's, yeah. So the motion is, let's make sure this is clear. If we, if we adopt the Traffic Safety Review Report, we're adopting your determination, staff's determination, that there's no action. Observed speeds and volumes are within acceptable ranges for local connector and local streets. Staff does not recommend the use of temporary speed bumps due to their limited effectiveness, the noise impacts, the required maintenance, the impact to emergency vehicles and potential liability. I think everybody on this council wants to make sure that if we approve the traffic safety report, which has other parts to it other than just what I described, that we're not forcing, we're not putting ourselves in a position where somebody can't come to us from the neighborhood, or we don't ourselves pivot and take a look at this because we've passed this resolution and now somebody says, well, no, you can't come back for a year.
No, we'll, we'll consider this matter. If we, we're going to have those conversations, look at the past approvals of Market Street, and then potentially propose further actions. So I would not take this as eliminating us to that one-year rule. It's a soft rule with the Traffic Safety Committee.
All right. All right. Thank you. With that understanding, Member Jackson, do you want to move the adoption of that Traffic Safety Report on March 1, 2022?
Yes. So moved.
Second? All right. We got a motion to second by Member Anderson to adopt the Traffic Safety Report on March 1, 2022. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? Carried. All right. And the next matter Director Milner has as well. And then we've got two sketch plan reviews. And when Director Teague comes up, we'll talk a little bit about what is a sketch plan review process that has brought all of you here this evening, before we get started on that process on those two potential projects. Resolution 2022-38 is a potential approval of a right-of-way easement vacation at 5012 Bedford Avenue. Director Milner.
Thanks, Mayor. Members of the council, we conducted the public hearing at the last city council meeting. We had this project on Better Together Edina, had comments open till noon last Monday. We received zero comments on this one. So staff would recommend approval of Resolution 2022-38 to vacate that easement adjacent to Bedford Avenue. I'd stand for any questions.
Any questions for Director Milner on this matter? Is there a motion to adopt Resolution 2022-38?
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Member Pierce, second by Member Staunton, to adopt Resolution 2022-38, which would vacate an alley right-of-way easement at 5012 Bedford Avenue. Any further discussion? All those in favor of adoption of the resolution have stated say aye.
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? Carried. All right. Now we're going to go to sketch plan review, and Director Teague's going to, we had the conversation upstairs with the planning commission about how this whole sketch plan process started probably 10 years ago. We tried to save people some money and time and get some ideas and feedback from the planning commission and the council as to whether an idea was a good idea or a bad idea, or if it was, needed some modification. And then they could decide whether they wanted to apply, come and file a formal application to have a project approved. And making adjustments to it as recommended by the council, the planning commissioner, just taking their chances. So let's, Director Teague, having said that, you can more artfully describe it than I can, but let's talk about that a little bit. And just to make sure folks should understand, this is not a public hearing. This is a matter that the council deals with solely on its own. It's an opportunity for the council to hear what's being proposed and raise questions and talk about what they like or don't like about a particular project. And then the developer has to go away and decide what they're going to do. So. has to go away and decide what they're going to do. So Director Teague, go ahead.
Yes, thank you, Mayor, Members of the Council, exactly. So you're asked to make non-binding comments on a potential development proposal. Applicant, there's not a vote this evening. Several of the emails that we've been receiving, they seem to be under the impression that there was a vote. You're just providing feedback to the developer and then they'll take that into consideration if they, if they decide to move forward with a formal application. So what I'll do is go through some of the details, the big picture, and what would be required as part of a formal application. And then the development team is also here to make a presentation as well. So this property is located at Fuller and France, just south of the intersection of 54th and France. It is the St. Peter's Church site. They're located both on the north and south side of the road. Aerial photograph there. This site is guided in our comprehensive plan for low-density residential. The maximum density in this low-density residential area is between one and five units per acre. So here's the site we're looking at. Here in this light yellow, the red to the north of the site is the gas station. The site is zoned R1, a single-dwelling unit district. The vast majority of churches in Edina are zoned R1. Churches and daycares are a conditionally permitted use. So the existing use is permitted through that conditional use permit. Note the commercial property to the north and the higher-density residential across France to the west. So what the applicant is considering on this site here is a remodel and expansion of the existing church. The expansion would include a 48-unit apartment complex. It would be three stories in height. The height would be somewhat similar to a single-family home, but obviously a much, much larger structure at that three-story, three-story height. Within the 48 units, 12 of the units would be for affordable housing, specifically for young adults with disabilities. So that's 25% of the units within the project would be for affordable housing. Also, part of this request, they're considering construction of four new single-family lots, two on the, on the east end, north side of Fuller, and then two on the south side. These lots are similar in size, as proposed here, similar in size to existing lots within the neighborhood, example, 60-foot wide lots. Those are substandard per our code, so there'd be some variances involved with those single-family homes. Parking for the church and the daycare would be on the south side of the street, similar to as it is today. Access to the multifamily housing would be off of Drew toward the back. And the play area would be located behind the apartments. So what this request would require, should a formal application be made, several items. A comprehensive plan amendment to re-guide the site from that low-density residential designation to high-density residential. So with the comprehensive plan amendment, a supermajority of the council is required. So it would be a 4/5 vote on any formal application. Request would require a rezoning from that single-dwelling unit district to a PUD, where we would potentially draft an ordinance specific for the site. They would be looking at flexibility from some of the R1 district standards in regard to building setbacks, parking standards, height and building coverage. And again, with the subdivision, there would be variances for lot area and, and width. So with that request, being that it would, does require a comprehensive plan amendment, the city has complete discretion whether to approve or deny that type of a request. So as a sketch plan, there wasn't a specific survey done, so some of these numbers may not be accurate once, once the property is surveyed and a formal application made. But in general, based on, on the information that we have, a variance would likely be requested on the Fuller side at six feet. Again, the building would be three stories in an R1 district, two and a half stories is the maximum, so that would be a variance. Building coverage at 48%, roughly 30% is the standard. Units per acre, as I mentioned, in that low-density district, one to five units an acre is within the comprehensive plan. With this site, if you take both the property on the south and on the north, the overall density would be 22 units an acre. If you just took the site where the church is located, it would be 33 units an acre. Either one is still in that high-density range. High-density is defined as between 12 and 60 units an acre. As I mentioned, the lot size variance as well. So again, just to quickly show, this would be that six-foot setback pulled up close to the street with the idea of providing the area for the, that play yard behind and pulling it away from the single-family homes to the north. So some of the things to consider as the council discusses this, primary, primary issue really is that density issue and the comprehensive plan amendment. Oftentimes, when there's single-family, that low-density district, before it gets to high-density, there's a transition of land uses. Typically, we have a low-density attached residential district, and that's between four and eight units an acre. We have a medium-density range between five and 12 units an acre. So this would be a jump from high-density, or from low-density to high-density. Question came up at the Planning Commission about the property to the west. The apartments across France, there are 11 units in one of those buildings and 13 in the other. This is the Fransway condos. So that density is at about 20 units an acre. So just to provide a little perspective there. The proposed use with those 12 affordable units is certainly a use in a type of housing that the city of Edina sorely needs. So it would be a positive on the city in terms of, of that type of housing. Consider those setbacks in height. Any formal application would require a traffic and parking study to determine impacts on the neighborhood. Because this is a comprehensive plan amendment, they would be required to comply with the city's sustainability policy. So with that, the council has received a lot of feedback on this project, both for and against. Not included in the packet, but just emails that have been, that have been forwarded. The development team is here to make a presentation, Chris Detling and Jackie Olson of Ablelight, the architect, and the pastor Mark Shaki from St. Peter's Church. So with that, I can stand for any questions, or we could have the development team make their presentation.
Any questions right now for Director Teague? Okay, good. Let's bring Mr. Detling and Pastor Shaki up. And my understanding is they'll have, they'll have about 15 minutes?
15 minutes for the team, correct.
Mayor, council members, thank you. I'm Chris Detling with Ablelight. I'm joined by, thank you. I'm joined by three members of the development team, as Carrie said. Pastor Mark Shaki with St. Peter's Church, they're the landowner. David Holland from Urban Works, they're our architect, and Jackie Olson, who, who is an Edina resident who represents a group of parents from Edina with adult children with disabilities. This group has been spearheading this effort for a number of years. And, and is just an integral part of the team, both Jackie and, and the broader parent group. Ablelight's a nonprofit, faith-based organization founded in 1904 with the mission to support individuals with intellectual and developmental disabilities. We operate in 13 states, including Minnesota. Ablelight Cornerstone Village is an innovative housing model that offers inclusive, multi-generational communities where young adults with intellectual and developmental disabilities and other people of all abilities and all ages support each other's independence and enrich each other's lives. Together with St. Peter's, we envision creating a community of 48 new homes, shared space for the church and for the Early Childhood Education Center in a remodeled and a reimagined space. As Carrie said, 25% or 12 of the units would be set aside for persons with intellectual and developmental disabilities. We would set an income restriction on those units at 30% of the area median income. 75%, the balance, the other 75% of the units would be market rate. And, and those would be available to people of all ages, although we know that seniors will be a likely market, people who choose to live at Cornerstone Village in an inclusive community, you know, have time to, to devote to those things. So we, we think that seniors will be a likely market, although we won't age restrict. So I'll hand it off to Pastor Mark and Jackie to talk about the unique opportunity we have to create something really special in Edina, and how the city can lean into its values of being a welcoming and inclusive city for everyone during all stages of their lives. And then our architect, David, will briefly describe the surrounding land uses, kind of the context and, and the development. And then I'll have a couple of points about comp plan if we have time. And then we'll take questions and, and listen to your feedback, which is what we're here for, to hear, hear what you think and have to say.
All right. Thanks, Mr. Detling. Pastor Shaki, welcome.
Good evening, thank you. Well, St. Peter's has been on the location on France Avenue since 1929, and we're on our way to 100 years. I've been pastor for 22 years. We're currently in our second sanctuary and in our second school building. Unfortunately, elementary school, well, fortunately for Edina, we have excellent, excellent schools. So the initial need in 1929 for education hasn't been as strong. What has happened is we have a school building that is underutilized. And a underutilized facility is hard to allocate funds to. And so it is quickly becoming in disrepair. The congregation has recognized that. And we are looking to take some, some action. I mean, that is nothing different than many congregations around the country right now are experiencing, just creative way coming out of, out of a pandemic to create sustainable models for, for ministry. We, four years ago, began to become more aware of families who were underserved in our neighborhood. And at that point, it was just to be helpful. We helped with some fundraising. We helped with some promotion for some other properties in the Twin Cities area. And then through the pandemic, we realized that this was something that might be beneficial for our ministry as well, as we saw a growing need in our community, especially for those who were looking for long-term solutions for especially young adult, high-functioning, young people with intellectual and developmental disabilities. So that's how we came along. We approached Ablelight as a partner of ours for almost 50 years in providing educational tools and other resources toward families. And we approached them and said, what would happen in this unique area? We, we have understood that you are, are seeking to do, do this, excuse me, in, in the Twin Cities area in some communities where the need is, is large. So the members of our congregation overwhelmingly made a decision over the course of a year to work together with another ministry, Ablelight, to create a, a housing project that would provide faith and, and physical support to those in our community. And we've seen just how incredible young people with disabilities are and how they can offer so much to, to the world when they have a supportive environment and just feel the, the working together of a church with care and concern and compassion to form a community that is accepting and, and supportive, one in which the church, I believe, will be around for another 100 years and will be hands-on in the midst of, of this development as we go forward. So our family of faith isn't going anywhere. We're here on France Avenue for the long haul and working together with Ablelight. We just think something amazing can happen as we serve these underserved residents with a new home and make that possible right in their own community. So Jackie can explain things a little more from the need perspective.
Hi, everyone. My name is Jackie Olson, and my husband and I have three children. Ben is 25, Andrew is 23. Charlotte is a 17-year-old senior at Edina High School. We've lived in Edina for 22 years, currently on Woodland Road West. And for what it's worth, Andrew said it's okay. I talk about him tonight. Andrew was diagnosed at six weeks old with a rare genetic disorder. Once he was diagnosed, we knew we could handle his physical needs, advocating for his education and therapies. But like many other parents in our situation, we immediately worried about what his adult life would look like. We were living in South Minneapolis at the time, but moved to Edina when he was nine months old for the cohesive community in the schools. And it has been an amazing and supportive place for him until he aged out of the system at 21, out of the school system at 21. When he was about 15, we started researching options that would allow him to live a full, active and independent life, or which for his housing was not complicated. We wanted a safe environment, as he's vulnerable for abuse, affordable, close to us, since we will always be his primary caregivers until we are no longer able to, inclusive in a community, and close to jobs and transportation. Needless to say, it doesn't exist in Edina. The current options for an individual like Andrew are limited and can be unsafe, isolating, and frankly, depressing. Well-run group homes and supportive apartments can have a two-year-long waitlist. And when there is an opening, families are encouraged to take any opening with no choice of location or roommate. Similarly, independent apartments are an option, but there is no sense of community and individuals can leave isolated and lonely lives also because they are not integrated with their neighbors. Most adults end up living with their aging parents. An important note that's worth mentioning is there is a moratorium on licensing new group homes because the state wants individuals with disabilities to live in more inclusive settings. So new group homes are not an option. The options are so bleak that the Housing Program Coordinator for Hammer Homes, which is a very well-respected housing program, said in an email to me today, "It is critical that new and innovative ideas are encouraged and fostered by your communities to continue to find equitable housing solutions for all." Nationwide, parent groups like us are banding together to create innovative solutions. Our parent group found Ablelight, and then St. Peter's Church found us. This was after I called every church in Edina saying, "Do you have any excess land that you're willing to sell to a worthy project?" Ablelight is a highly respected nonprofit. They create, do you mind doing some slideshows? This is their location in Victoria, which is their first residential, or their first Cornerstone Creek community in Minnesota. They create beautiful, secure, independent living communities with social activities. Their living communities check all of our options, so much so that I anticipate them becoming a nationwide leader in disabled housing. As proposed, 25 of the units would be designated affordable for adults with disabilities. If our individuals have roommates, which Andrew would, it could serve much more than that. People ask, why not more? Because that's the definition of inclusion. But this isn't about Andrew. It's about Hannah, Jack, Elise, all Edina graduates who are living in Victoria because there was nothing closer to home. It's about the approximately 75 Edina High School students with defined disabilities who need housing, and there is none. It's about Ryan, Emily, Matthew, Patrick, Ailey, Rachel, Carly, Jack, Jake, Carly, Jessica, and I could go on and on. Planning Commissioner Lori Olson's feedback is worth repeating. She said, and I quote, "My main thought is, if not here, where? We've heard a lot of the commissioners mention thoughts about it should go somewhere else, but no one has a place to put it." Edina is completely built out. There are few opportunities for a project like this in this community. Inclusivity is hard, and it makes these types of decisions challenging. If it were easy to be inclusive, we wouldn't need it as a goal. Edina needs to lean into its values of being a welcoming, inclusive, equitable community. We need to lead the way. We need to do better, and we can do better. Like so many families before me, our family is about to hit a milestone, sending our youngest off to college. It should be filled with joy and excitement, but it is filled with all of that and a bit of dread, because her life is about to soar and Andrew's is staying stagnant. It's a milestone filled with reminders of the lack of possibilities for young adults with disabilities as they travel through their adult years. Thank you so much."
Thank you, Ms. Olson.
Hard to follow up here, but my name is David Holland with Urban Works Architecture, just here to talk about a few of the details of the proposal.
Want to hold on for just a moment?
Okay.
Identify yourself too, please.
David Holland with Urban Works Architecture. So we've been working with Ablelight on the project with our architect. So here just to add a few more details about the proposal. So one of the things, actually Carrie articulated was the preservation of the 1959 Ralph Rapsin Sanctuary. And so in this project, we would actually demolish the 1984-ish gym, and that would allow us to construct the 48 apartment units. And in doing so, it's a greater, more efficient use of space. It allows the church, the early childhood and residential building to share spaces and create spaces that Jackie so described. So it's from a parking standpoint, let me see, just from a site plan, where did it go? Okay, so I will note that there's 48 enclosed parking stalls below grade for the residential building and 45 surface parking stalls on France. And in the site plan, I think one of the ways in making the transition here is to provide the single-family homes as a buffer between the three-story building and the other single-family homes. And again, the folks that are buying those lots would be doing that with the knowledge that there is going to be a three-story building there next door. And so, and by, and you can, here you can see, by setting the building back, so the existing gym is approximately about 15 feet off the property line, and this is about 60 feet back. So again, trying to give us a little air, some breathing room to the adjacent neighbors, and minimize the impact.
Would you give those numbers again, please, so that, from the lot line?
Sure.
To the building you say is 60 feet?
Correct. That's correct, yep. And the existing gym, if we'll just scroll up here, sorry. So here, it's approximately 15 feet in the current situation. And that gym is about 20 feet tall. In a three-story building, new construction would be about 30 to 35 feet tall. So trying to minimize the impact as much as we can. So as far as the transition, I think it does a really nice job in making that transition to the single-family. And then, you know, I think from the site context standpoint, I think Carrie already mentioned the density directly across from France. And it is actually right near the 54th and France, the BRT line. So again, something to consider as a more appropriate spot for some slightly more, slightly higher density. So again, I think I'm almost out of time here, so. Chris, do you want to?
Yeah, I think we're running close to our 15 minutes. Is that correct?
You're definitely, yeah, if you're the, are you the wrap-up?
I'm the wrap-up, yes. And so I was going to make some comments about consistency with comprehensive plan and other plans in the city, but I made those comments at the planning commission, and I'm sure many of you have watched the video, and so those comments are there, and staff did make some of those connections to plans, especially Stephanie. So I'll just wrap up by saying, you know, we really appreciate being here. We're looking forward to hearing your feedback and ideas and questions. Next steps would be incorporating that feedback that we heard from planning commission in here, making some revisions, continuing to work with the immediate neighbors as we move forward, present changes that we might make based on these conversations, and continue with the neighbors, and then decide we'll make a formal application. And then we'll have planning commission and council and public hearings at that time. Thank you very much.
All right. Thanks, Mr. Detling, and thanks to the others as well, Pastor Shaki and Ms. Olson, and then I think it was Mr. Nelson, architect?
David Holland with Urban Works.
What was the architect's last name?
Holland, H-A-L-A-N-D.
Holland? Okay. Thank you. All right, let's, I think Member Jackson wants to lead us off here.
Sure. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Actually, I have a real quick question for you, Mr. Detling, before I go into my review. Where are you expecting the support staff? I know the families sometimes bring people in. Where will they be parking?
Yeah, so support staff comes in, comes in and out, and so they would use the parking lot, depending on how the underground parking is parked. You know, in the summer, folks sometimes use the exterior parking lot, and so there's more spaces available underground. We might be able to make arrangements for staff to park underground. At our other property, for the most part, they just park in surface parking. You know, folks who receive services at Ablelight, Cornerstone Villages, they really have a high level of independence. So depending on the person, they may have just a, you know, a staff that comes a few times a week, and there are other folks that need some support more often, so they may have a live-in caretaker, often a family member. And so in both of those cases, there's not a lot of in and out. But for the folks that might need assistance with some meals or getting to and from work, those staff would be helping with that. Most of the folks who have disabilities that live in our properties don't drive, so you might think about the, you know, if a caretaker is coming with a vehicle, it kind of balances itself out, and the caretakers are not there all the time.
Okay. Thank you. So one of the things that strikes me in looking at this is that this neighborhood is going to change pretty much no matter what, whether this goes through or not. I think that St. Peters has more land and more facilities than they can control. So I want everyone to kind of set your mindset that this is going to change. There are going to be more families here. There's going to be more traffic in this neighborhood, no matter what we say about this plan. So I want people to put themselves in the position where they're thinking about change, because nothing is going to stay the same. This is underutilized land. The second thing is sort of looking at the comprehensive plan standards. And the last time we had someone come forward asking for a comprehensive plan change, the mayor had some really wise words, and that was to think about what are the standards that we would look at for doing comprehensive plan change. And I went through the plan at that time, that was in December, and made a checklist. And there are four questions that we ask, and the one that really applies here is, have opportunities emerged to prompt this change? But the other one I wanted to think about a little bit is, will this change apply to a wide range of circumstances? And I think, you know, looking at the need in this community, we have to think about this in a wide, in a wide range. But I think that this is definitely an opportunity that has emerged that would be a prompt for us to consider change. And then when you look at the goals of the different chapters of the comprehensive plan, there are several chapters where this does address needs that our community and goals that our community has. So I think, you know, if we can resolve some of the problems, we can find a way to a comprehensive plan change. So I don't see that as an overwhelming barrier. The other thought that I keep having when I think about this is, there is tremendous demand for this type of housing in our community, but if it were easy, we would already have it. And so this is not going to be an easy process. And it's not like, oh, we can just go find another lot someplace and do this. It's expensive, it's complicated, and it's worth working on because there is just this tremendous demand. And I tell you, I started making notes of moving emails that I got, and I ran out of room on my notebook. I heard from so many people with so many really difficult situations and concerns, because these are our children, and we're worried about their future, and their friends, their neighbors, their families, and this is a real need that our community has. So that's sort of the context with the comprehensive plan change. I have some questions about, and this is, I don't want an answer tonight, but I want you to think about that currently, this is a tax-exempt church, and this is going to change its use quite a bit. And so I've got three questions related to that. And one is, how is restoring the sanctuary a part of this overall deal? Because I assume we're going to be looking at some public financing too around the length. So this is going to dramatically change how this space is used. And when it's all connected like that, I think one of the things we'll be seeing is a change in the tax status of the property, and that's something to consider as we're moving forward. And again, you know, we look at taxable versus, and you understand this because you're a nonprofit, but you have a taxable business. And so the complexity of, for St. Peters, in this change of use is going to change their tax status, and we're going to need to consider, you know, what the property taxes are and how the uses are interrelated. And then finally, you know, as we're, this is about the, sort of the use, thinking about how necessary the two buildings being connected have to be. And that kind of leads me into my questions about the buildings. This is a really large building that we're looking at. And, you know, going out to Victoria, it is a big building. One thing that I'm concerned about is the pitch of the height of the roof in Victoria. I think that adds tremendously to the height, and one thing I would definitely ask you to do is change the pitch of that roof. Anything we can do to lower the height will be beneficial to everyone. I know that it probably lowers the cost to have an unarticulated building, but one of the things that does break up larger buildings is to have that space articulated, and I'd like you to consider that. I'm concerned about the driveway coming in off of Drew, and if we can get, you know, less traffic going there and more to the parking lot. But then that kind of leads me to the point that if it's possible to put the apartments at Fuller and France rather than connected to the sanctuary, I know that adds to the cost and the complexity of what you're doing, but it solves a lot of problems that the neighbors have. And like I said, if it were easy, it would already have happened. And I know this is incredibly expensive and complicated, but I strongly encourage you to consider that. The other thing, I also know that this changes your plan, but I'd strongly encourage you to consider making this age-restricted for the market-rate units. I know that lowers the number of people who can access this, with individuals with intellectual and developmental disabilities, but it adds stability. And I love that phrase that you use, where we support each other's independence. And it's such an important thing. We need senior housing in Edina. We need this type of housing for the IDD students. And I really like that cross-cultural mix that you've got out in Victoria, and I think it does add to stability and reduce the amount of traffic that's going to come in and out. So those are primarily my things. I have to say, I am deeply moved by what people have said. I really want to see this happen. That being said, it's really big, and any way we can kind of work on that to mitigate that, and I think this is something that we owe the children of Edina. So, thank you.
Thank you, Member Jackson. Member Anderson?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Detling, I want to thank you for your presentation tonight. I have a granddaughter who suffers from IDD, although she's on the severe range with the genesis of the corpus callosum. That's severe. She'll never be a candidate for this type of housing, but I do understand the impact on families, and I do understand the need. It's a demonstrated need, and that's very, very clear. I do have some questions for you. Your current proposal is for 48 units, and 36 are at market rate, 12 is affordable, and they're designated for specialized usage. So maybe you've discussed this with Director Teague. How do you, how can you contain that usage on those 12 units? Do you get that into deed restrictions on the, is that how you do it?
For affordability, there would be a deed restriction. For population served, that's just through marketing. We will, when a vacancy is available for one of the, 25% of the units, set aside for folks with disabilities, we would market to a person with a disability. There'll be, you know, there'll be a long list of folks eligible and interested in moving in, and once the building fills, you know, we'll have a list to work off of.
Okay. I'm going to ask you some questions, just so I can get my arms around this, and they're going to be specific to the operation. The 12 units, are those designated units, or are they specially equipped in any way?
So they're not licensed units. This is not a healthcare setting. It's not assisted living. You know, these are independent apartments. You know, people will sign their leases, and just like they would at an apartment building on the street. The difference here, other than the community that we build, in all of our units, we provide smart technology to help increase people's independence. So there's an Alexa in a unit, so folks can control their lights. You know, we can add things to that Internet of Things package based on their needs. So if someone has low mobility and there's a worry of someone falling out of bed, we can put a sensor on the floor that if someone falls out of bed, their caretaker is notified. We can do things with like water sensors, so if someone leaves a faucet on, their caretaker can find out, or they can get a notice and be reminded to turn the water off or turn the stove off. The, all the units would have smart locks, so, you know, folks don't have keys, they'll use a code or a card to get into their units and lock up. You can lock the doors through Alexa, their caretaker can check and see if the unit is locked. We can connect the thermostats so that, you know, we know that the heat is on at an appropriate level in the winter, their caretaker can. So we use those supports to create more, a higher level of independence. If there are people with other, say, physical needs, we would make adaptations to the units, grab bars, you know, lower sinks, pull under. All of our units, we do, you know, wider doorways, wider hallways, just because it's the right thing to do in this day and age. We're all getting older and need that, so it's something that we're, that we would do even if the person living there doesn't need those features. So I know you have other questions and?
I do.
Yes.
But you're getting to some information that I'm interested in. So you're building the building to ADD specs, is that, that's what I'm hearing?
Yeah, there'll be units that will be fully accessible, and then the rest of the building would be, I would say, would be visitable.
Okay. That's helpful. There was some give and take here with Member Jackson and yourself about staffing, and I got the impression in watching your initial presentation that there's no actual staffing Pastor Shaki, though, discussed care, and I, could you describe that a little bit? That's, I want to be clear on supervisory expectations on staffing and whatever staffing you're providing.
Sure. You know, part of Ablelight's mission and our values and our culture is around not only independence and inclusion, but also consumer choice. So while Ablelight does provide lots of different levels of service and personal cares at group homes and elsewhere in our, around the country, we don't require that folks utilize our services. So folks who move into Cornerstone Village usually have a service provider relationship already, or have care providers, often their family members, and we allow them to choose which caretaker situation works best for them. What we provide, and like I said, it could be a staff person that's paid, it could be a family member. What we provide, staffing onsite, is property management and activities coordinator. onsite, is property management and a activities coordinator, a life enrichment coordinator, someone who gets people out of their units, helping reduce isolation, helping build that community. That's our piece. That's not really a service, but it's a, it's a way to build a community, and we feel it's important, so we plan for that.
Okay. It just, it creates a question in my mind. I've experienced some long-term care, and what you find there is, is that X number of people are very, very caring about relatives or close friends who are in a long-term care facility, even in independent living. Others, not so much. And so I just, I wonder what would happen with 12 or more IDD residents in a facility. And I'm not really asking you to comment on that, it just, it creates a question for me.
I do have a response if you're willing, if I may. So when we're interviewing folks, people who are interested in submitting an application, we sit down with them, we sit down with their family members, with their caregiver, and talk about what it means to live independently. You know, either moving from your parents' home or moving potentially from a group home, are you ready, are they ready to really have an independent apartments? And be self-deficient and independent, and can the level of care that they have access to, can that support their independence? So it's, you know, it's kind of a process and a discussion, and not everyone, I would expect, will say, will say yes. And we've had, in Victoria, we've been open about a year, there's been, I believe it's just one resident who was struggling a little bit, and we had to have the conversation about maybe it's not the right place for them. And we're working through that.
Okay, thank you. Can you tell me a little bit of the four to one ratio that you're proposing? Can you tell me a little bit about that and why that is an important ratio for you? I see the opportunity here. I mean, we've got 12 units out of a proposed 48, and I don't know why there couldn't be 18 or 24. There's a clear need, and so I would wonder what the rationale is for the four to one mix.
Yeah, two things. One is internal. Ableite believes in inclusion, and we want to promote that, and it's our feeling that once we start exceeding 25% of the units set aside, that our properties would become, would feel more institutional. And we don't want to recreate institutions, we don't want to recreate group homes. We really want to facilitate and support inclusion and independence, and we feel like that's a good balance. It's working really well at Victoria. That's, that property, because it's 55-plus restriction, the maximum number of IDD units is 20%. There's a federal fair housing law that says to be able to restrict to 55-plus, you can't have more than 20% of the units serving folks who are younger than 55. And so we, so there's that cap at 20%. We also need a buffer. So at Victoria, we don't lease as many units as we could to people with disabilities who are younger, because we don't want to have another resident who qualified as 55-plus. You know, maybe one of the, let's say it's a married couple or a couple, one person's 55 and one person's younger, they move out, that household now counts against the 20%. And if we exceed it, we lose the ability to age restrict, and that's an issue for our financing and marketing and for all the folks that are living there that chose to live in a senior housing development. So it, and the third thing I'll say is, it's around, it's around inclusion. And in Minnesota, there's a decree called Olmsted, and some federal programs and services and financing, many programs have this 25% restriction. This is not to say that you can't do a development serving people with intellectual and developmental disabilities that is even 100% supportive housing. That can happen. There are developments like that, but the, you're limited on a number of financing and service sources that you can utilize at the development. So that's the third reason why we cap at 25%.
Okay, that's helpful. Thank you. So let me poke around a little bit at your financial model. You have 12 units that would be affordable, and that 30% AMI is what I think you're solving for. And I heard you answer Member Jackson's question affirmatively, but not specifically, about any kind of public financing that you might be pursuing. How would you envision that?
So first of all, the market rate units do help support reducing rents and help support operating costs at the rest of the development, so that's important. If it were 100% affordable, we would have a much greater gap and a need for subsidy. You know, we're really early on in the process. We're just trying to get an idea of what size development, how many units, what bedroom types, you know, what this might look like. You know, once we get through this process and things are a little bit more solidified, I can develop a pro forma, get some construction pricing.
That's not necessary tonight. I'm simply asking so that I understand. This is supposed to be a sketch plan review with just some feedback, but it's a very emotional issue in the community. Look at this group here tonight, so we can see that, and it's divided really about people who are, can be affected by the building, and then the people who see the need and are supportive of the need. And so I want to ask these questions so that there's an understanding.
And I hope it doesn't sound like I'm avoiding that question. I think I was getting there, but...
It's just, it's very, it's too specific at this time. I get it. Okay. All right. The decision, the five single-family home sites, is that, what's the reasoning behind that as opposed to more building or more open space or whatever you might do?
So in the current plan, there are four, and the idea is that we would create those lots. Some of the lots already exist, they're already planted, but we would create those lots and sell them and use the proceeds to help reduce the gap so that our request to public funders is less.
Okay, all right. Well, without getting too, a lot more questions, my colleagues will have, I'm certain, several more. My impression overall, number one, I understand the need, and I think it's a laudable enterprise, both on the part of Ableite and St. Peter's. And it's clear that St. Peter's can benefit from a repurposing of its site, and I think that's part of the goal here. You know, the issue is the dramatic increase in density, the setback variances, lack of transition to the neighborhood. That's, those are the things that were brought forward at the Planning Commission. And those, they exist. Those factors, combined with rezoning, comprehensive plan amendment, that's serious territory. And so we want to be very careful about our approach there and to not impact the community unnecessarily, and also to try to create an opportunity. It's, at least, that's my perspective. The site, I, Member Jackson began to blaze a trail here that I'm going to follow up on, and we didn't talk about it. The utilizing the parking lot, the south side parking lot more readily into the facility itself or into a different concept than you may have already employed, number one, puts the property directly on France, and it gives, I think, better access. That could mean a smaller building. But in my perfect world, as a recommendation or a thought wave for you to consider, you might have fewer units and more dedicated to your IDD group. If you intend to consider asking for public financing, then, you know, that would certainly be something to base it on. I am concerned about impact in the community and concerned about going, putting that size building directly into that location, and not to mention the variances that go with that in terms of setbacks. So I'd encourage you to consider that, how that might, in using that south side parking lot, how you might consider it. And I think that if you were to find your way to that, it, I think, encompasses the joint ministry that Pastor Shaki has discussed, and also addresses some of the needs of the community. When we consider the Southdale Design Guidelines, for instance, the transition and the buffering is always really, really important. If a smaller building were on that site with, say, a twin home, a duplex, something, as you move to the east, that does allow you still to create your other single-family homes that might be on the additional in the other site, and your parking could be concentrated more over there, and with some underground parking even underneath that site, and maybe no underground parking next door. I'm not trying to redesign your building necessarily, but I am trying to find a way that you can create this facility in some way.
Mayor, Councilmember, I'll just add that that exact thing, a smaller apartment building south of Fuller was one of the very first ideas that we explored. We like the building on the north side of Fuller because we can connect to the sanctuary, and having that connection to those community spaces is really important. It'll increase activity and just get people together more to, you know, to build this community. It's something that we're still open to, a smaller apartment building south of Fuller, and as you say, maybe some lower density transition, row homes or something on the north side.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Well, that's all I have, so thank you again very much for being here.
Thank you. Member Pierce?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So I actually love a lot of what has already been said, so I'm gonna echo a little bit of what my colleagues have already shared, but I did want to pick up on a couple of points. I do think that there is a need in the community. We've heard, we've heard that explained or expounded upon tonight, but you know there is a need when there's this many people here. And typically, it's a polarized issue. And what I would, what I would suggest is that out of all of the emails that we've had, and we do get all the emails, we've had a number of meetings, some of them we attended together, some of them were separate. I've had tons of conversations, but the common thread in all of those, even though, as Member Anderson said, there's a polarity here. There are people here today who support one position, there are people here who support a different position, but when you talk about the purpose and the vision behind this, I think the majority of people say, yeah, we understand there's a need. And so I, I just, I talk a lot about being in the political process in a respectful way. That's what this is tonight, and the process that we've been along, we've been on along the way. I just, I just think it's a good, so far it's been a good process, and so everybody here tonight should hear me say that, and I think it's awesome. And so we should continue that. And so it is a polarity. Polarities don't have solutions, right? There's a north and a south pole. We need both, right? The earth has poles, it turns around. We need both. We can't get rid of one or get rid of the other. And so a polarity is a challenge that we have to figure out how to solve. And there are a couple of those in this particular project. One is pretty clear. We don't have this capability in Edina, and Ms. Olson had to leave, but I wanted her to read the email that she referenced, that talked about, we need to be creative to find solutions to challenges. I didn't write it down, but it was, I paraphrased it to that. And I think their group is really trying to figure out how to bring this capability to not just Edina, but where it's needed across the nation, so I applaud that. But it's a challenge. It is, as we've talked about, it's a heavy lift. I often say that the comprehensive plan is a framework, it's a guideline, and it's nothing more than that. And acknowledging that in no way diminishes its value, in no way diminishes its immense importance to our nation, to our community. We need it. It's there for a reason. But we can be compelled to change it. We've done that with the Constitution 27 times. We've amended the Constitution because we've been compelled as a nation to do something different. And so I tee that up as a framework, and then I have to be honest, this is definitely a heavy lift, and I don't know if this is the right location for this, for, to meet the need or not, but I do know the need is there. And I do know that there are several people in our community, a great number of people in our community, who acknowledge that the need is there. And so I would, I would, I'd make a couple of additional points. One, no matter what sketch plan comes before us, there's four things that we talk about. It's density, height, traffic, sustainability. We haven't said the word sustainability, but in Member Anderson and Member Jackson's comments, if you tick down, that's what we're talking about. Setbacks, if you're set further back, you can have more green space. That's, you know, that's sustainability. So that's what I'm referencing there. But we can't get tied around the axle on those four things, because in my opinion, we're not trying to solve for density, height, traffic, sustainability. We're trying to figure out how our community can provide this need that we have, that my colleagues have already spoken so eloquently about. And so I would, you've answered a lot of my project questions already, but I think I may, I'll ask you one, to just tee up my recommendations for you, or maybe two. Talk about the Victoria building. When Member Jackson says it's a large building, this, the current plan, when I drive down France or I'm walking down France and I get to the church, the thing that smacks me in the face is that atrium right there on France. But talk to me about the size of the facility in Victoria. Height, stories, not everybody has seen that facility, and compare and contrast those two for me.
All right, Mayor, Councilmember Pierce, thank you. Appreciate the opportunity to address the question about Victoria. Victoria is a three-story development with underground parking and a pitched roof, a pretty high pitched roof. It's a really suburban, almost rural location on the edge of downtown Victoria, next to a park. That development has more land, there's townhomes that we've built, it's lower density. Two completely different solutions to the need that we're trying to meet. What we did in Victoria, we would never do at this site in Edina. You're right, that pitched roof makes it look huge. We would do a flat roof. We, you know, we do more articulation, we do step down. That building does have, every unit has a balcony or a patio. That's a great feature. I hope to do that. That's the one thing I hope to replicate, that and the underground parking. But, you know, and the finishes, the materials on the exterior, it's pretty moderate in Victoria. We would up that, you know, the city of Edina would expect it and require it, and we would want to do it. The interior unit features would be fairly similar, you know, higher-end finishes, granite, nice flooring, great doors, woodwork. But yeah, I see a three-story, flat roof, porches, articulated building, you know, really similar to a lot of the new development that you see in Edina and Minneapolis.
Okay.
More brick, more...
Okay. And then the follow-up to that, which is tangential to the questions that Member Anderson asked, the number of units in Victoria is?
I believe it's 57 total.
So it's 57 total?
Including the townhome units.
Yep. And then the proposed unit will have 48... And then, the proposed unit will have 48.
48, yes.
And so, there's a ratio there that you're trying to target. The way I have thought about it is that you have to have so many units in order for two things to happen. One is for the viability of the financial model, whether it's funding or outside sources. And then, two, in order to have enough mass in the building to do a lot of the vitality, the community, building the community, those types of interactions, you have to have enough of the right balance of residents in order to drive that. Are those two statements fair?
Yes, absolutely, absolutely. We would want to have a full-time activities coordinator, property manager. And if the building's too small, we can only support half-time. That means the level of our ability to do activities and create that social interaction is decreased.
Okay.
And then, there's a lot of other costs related to the size of building that are fixed cost. And as you get bigger, it doesn't get more expensive. But as you get smaller, the per-unit cost goes up. And, you know, there's, yeah, challenges to make it smaller. There's also, you know, the opportunity cost. And, but more than anything, it's the number of folks with disabilities that we would serve.
Right.
As the building gets smaller, we serve fewer people. Our mission is to serve people with intellectual developmental disabilities and, you know, hope we can maximize that because the need is so great. But do understand that there's a lot of concern about the size of the building, the number of units.
Okay. And then, just a couple more points. And Ms. Olson, if you would do me a favor and find the email that you read, when you made your comments, you read an email you got today.
Oh, a comment, oh, yeah. Oh, from the Hammer Homes.
A quote in there? If you could pull that out, I'm gonna ask you to read it in a second here.
Yeah, he actually, if he hasn't written a letter, he's going to be writing a letter. They're in crisis mode.
Okay.
They get calls every day from people saying, "Where can our child live?" He got a call from a 40-year-old woman the other day, who has a 40-year-old sister with Down Syndrome, living in the Birchcrest neighborhood, looking at, exploring options. The mom just died, and he had to say, "There isn't anything." So, they've been, but I forwarded that email.
You read a quote from his email about innovation, creativity. That's the quote I wanted to, wanted you to read in one second.
Yeah, and he's seen Victoria and just was like, was very grateful for the model and the creativity because it, you know, I guess technically he'd be like a competitor because he's doing housing, but it's all nonprofit world, so it doesn't matter. But he was just, we need more options for families because it's really, it's really depressing.
So, where I'm going with that is, just to underscore Member Anderson's point, and I guess we've all made this point. When you look at where I started in terms of things, we have guidelines and frameworks, but we need to be compelled to make changes to those. And they should be compelling reasons for that, right? It's not, it's not an easy thing. We don't take it trivial. And so, moving from low density to high density, like, that's, that's a big deal. It really is. R1 designation, when you look at the slide that we had up earlier, that Director Teague had up, the density, right, those metrics, those are big deals. If you're living on Fuller in the setback of a building that may be shorter than the one in Victoria, but when Member Jackson says it's a big building, she's actually saying that because it's relational. When you drive out to Victoria, right, there's a huge, there's a street that you turn on. There's a, there's a softball field to the right. You drive up past a couple of townhomes. And then, sitting back there nestled right in the corner of that property is this beautiful structure that is open, welcoming. But when you're in a city center, right, and you're on France and you have that size of a building there, even though it may be shorter than Victoria, it's just the spatial relation to the street sizes, all of that, that's what gives it that impression of being a big building. And so, that, changing that designation from R1, changing that R1 designation is a huge challenge. The setbacks, again, I would say the same thing. But where I'm going is this quote.
Okay, here we go. So, he's referencing group homes first. He says, "Opening at group homes and supportive housing programs for people with disabilities are incredibly scarce." He's referencing kind of the bad ones that are in the news. "Openings at great companies with great reputations come up even less frequently. It is critical that new innovative ideas are encouraged and fostered by our communities to continue the fight against this huge problem."
So, read that last part again. New...
"It is critical that new slash innovative ideas are encouraged and fostered by our communities to continue the fight against this huge problem."
Thank you.
And I will forward that to you all.
Thank you. So, I would close with this. I started by acknowledging everybody here. We all see the need. I had conversations with folks on both sides. I had conversations with, you know, with the family who I would have raised my firstborn. And we got into it. And I asked some tough questions, and they asked tough questions back of me. But at the end of that hour, they were still recognizing the need. But it's an impact on the community that is a tough, that is tough to deal with. And so, I asked for this quote because my ask of you is not to start with what we have in Victoria, but to meet with the neighbors, especially those that are most immediately impacted, to say, "How can we be more innovative and creative to fill the need if we think that this is a good location for this?" And I get that. We actually talked about it. The transportation, it's walkable, the access, right? It's a good location for many reasons. But I think we have to be more innovative and creative. And I would almost ask you to start with, what is, here's the need, here's what we think we need in order to fulfill that need. How can we make that happen? And I know I might make this sound easy, but I would go so far as to say, even challenging the funding on this, are there things that we could leverage our mayor to do, to advocate? Are there things that I can do to go advocate for us to do things differently? So, that's where I am. It definitely is, it's a huge lift. But I think we are in it. We understand the need. But that will be my ask, is that we partner with the neighbors. And I'm sure you've had some meetings with the neighbors. But to try and find a creative, more innovative solution that would fit within the community structure to meet both needs.
Thank you, Member Pierce. Member Staunton?
There's always a risk to following this, here, Pierce. Let me, let me highlight, I agree with a lot of things that have been said so far, and I want to emphasize a few and add maybe a couple of points. But I do want to start by saying, you know, the number of people in this room. Last week, we had a whole bunch of people in this room who had concerns on a different issue. And it was refreshing, as I said at the time, and it's refreshing today, to have us all back together doing this. And so, thank you all for coming out, and thank you all for writing such passionate notes. I didn't get a single cookie cutter email. Every single email was individually written on every side of this issue. And I really, I really want to applaud people for sharing all of their feelings with us. I want to echo what Member Pierce said about the agreement on the need. You know, we talk a lot about being a welcoming and inclusive community. And I would say, everybody, whether they were opposed or in support of this, recognizes the need. And I wanted to, I wanted to just share one, one line from an email that I got from Tuanne Fox, who lives right in the neighborhood, who, by the way, was a member of our Race and Equity Task Force that Member Pierce chaired. And she said, "If you asked me, 'Do you think this community would reject or welcome IDD individuals,' my answer would be emphatically accept and support." And I think that represents what the neighbors feel. And if there's a regret I have about the process that we're in, it's that the neighbors end up in this spot where they feel like they're opposing something that I'm sure they're all supportive of. And so, I want to recognize that. The other, the other notion that I think is important, you know, and I want to, I want to identify, you know, I think we've all learned something about these members of our community who we take care of right up until they leave high school or college, and then they become young adults. And I can't imagine what it feels like as a parent to try to figure out that answer. And I know, you know, Ted and Ellen Dryden, who lived down the street from me before we sold our house last year, their daughter Hannah is in Victoria and loves it, but they'd love to have her closer. And I think we can all appreciate what that must feel like. And so, I've watched them go through this, and they've shared, and it's really important that we do this, and I think the whole community recognizes that. So, with that said, I, you know, as I talk about this, I think about the Victoria campus, and I thank you for inviting me out there. And I had a chance to see, I thought Member Pierce did a great job of describing kind of the feel of that campus. And, and this is a very different environment where you're proposing to put something now. And the building is pretty similar in size, even though it won't have a pitched roof, but it is, you know, it's three stories and it's about 48, 50 units. So, that's a lot of building for this site. And I think, you know, my instinct is that doesn't work here. And it's funny that, James, you brought up the quote because I wrote down in my notes, "new and innovative." And, and I think that's what we need in this situation. We need new and innovative. And I know that everybody who is here tonight is coming with the best of intentions. And I know as nerves fray a little bit, there's a little bit of kind of, well, are those people trying to double-cross me? Are those people doing something that isn't good faith? I can assure you, I know people on both sides of this issue. Everybody is bringing good faith to this. And so, I would encourage you to engage with the folks in that neighborhood because I think they can be your best assets. And I think, you know, some people have talked about this being a precedent. I see it as an opportunity. Because no matter what we do in this neighborhood, it's not going to meet the need. And that's, that's been the revelation for me. And so, whatever we do here, we have to be able to replicate elsewhere if we're going to meet the need. And it's not going to be good to replicate, we're not going to be able to replicate something that's not going to work. So, so my advice to you, as you, as you kind of continue on this journey, is to be, to be engaged with that neighborhood and let them help you figure it out. Because I think there's an answer here. And I think, as I said to somebody, there's a pony in here somewhere. So, I encourage you to do that. Take into account all the guidance you've gotten tonight, and hopefully, we can find that pony before we're at the end of this road. Thank you.
Thank you, Member Staunton. I think you can all see why it's a pleasure to serve on this council, with the thoughtful people that we have working here. We had Walk with the Mayor Saturday, and when my wife and I walked into Southdale, got blown into Southdale, there was a pretty good group of people there. And we said, "Well, what's everybody here for, Walk with the Mayor? What do they want, what do you want to talk about?" And one group wanted to talk about the location of the fire station. And then, another group was interested in the St. Peter's project. And then, there was another woman with two of her kids and a black headband on, and she said she was there to pitch her new nonprofit, "Just a headband." She's going to try to get everybody in Edina exercising, and all you need is a headband. So, "Look up, just a headband." My wife appropriated the one she gave me, and it's off, anyway. So, we, the first conversation we had was with folks on Fuller and also people that were living up in White Oaks. I can't, I don't see them, and, yeah, there they are. In fact, those distinctive glasses, nice people live up in White Oaks. They got a son who has some disabilities, works at Walgreens, I think, on Market Street. And first thing you know, everybody's walking along, talking to each other about the very thing that Member Staunton's talking about, and that is appreciating and understanding and being supportive of the challenge that we face here. I left that Walk with the Mayor thinking, "I need to get ahold of the Edina Housing Foundation." Because as Member Staunton points out, there's, there's no solution here at St. Peter's to this in terms of the level of need. You know, I digress a second here, but several years ago, we had, we thought we had a project just south of the Y, Southdale Y. And I think it was right at the time of the Great Recession, and the whole thing cratered out. I don't know if the Y couldn't get financing, what it was, we were going to have a significantly sized building over there. And I can tell you from talking to the neighbors in the Fuller neighborhood, Creek Knoll, that to a person that I talked to, every one of them was supportive of this need, and even supportive to some extent of trying to figure out what could be done in St. Peter's property. When I first heard about this, just by way of kind of rumor, I thought, "Oh, Pastor Mark that I've known for probably over a decade, he must be thinking about proposing something on the parking lot right across from the church, right on France Avenue." And so, when I learned more about the plan and discovered what the, what the notion was, a combination of 48 units of intergenerational housing and some single-family homes, I got to thinking about, well, what other, what other frame of reference do we have here in Edina that might be helpful? And of course, I thought about the waters, the living waters, which is assisted, senior assisted living, was a piece of land sold by Colonial Church to a nonprofit that built on that church property, that assisted living facility that is so well-used and, I think, fully occupied. But that, when we agreed to allow that to happen, we thought about the fact that it was behind the fire station, on the crosstown. There wasn't a neighbor within 1,000 feet. It was by a park, and it was by a church. And just vastly different geography or circumstance from what we're facing here. And when you think about churches that exist in single-family neighborhoods in Edina, and I think other places as well, on a conditional use basis, it's, it's kind of grounded in the U.S. Constitution, this freedom of religion. And the notion that if a church wants to dispose of land in an R1 zone, what standards should apply? I mean, they're in there on a conditional use basis in a single-family neighborhood. So, you got to think hard about what sort of, what sort of standard should apply to that circumstance where you would not be converting at all to a single-family neighborhood, but you want to do something that's significantly different from what's there? Well, in the situation with the waters, it worked out because of the, what I just described. I don't think it works here. It could work on that, on that property across, directly across from the church on France Avenue. I don't know that. But to me, for me personally, that would be a more interesting sort of conversation and study. I listened to, you described the model, Mr. Netling, 48 units, 12 units of supportive housing. I still don't know if I understand the model. I understand it's partially financially driven. Seems to me that there could be a conversation around a smaller building on, that's... Seems to me that there could be a conversation around a smaller building on that site directly across from the church, but those are your decisions that you guys are going to have to make. From a site plan standpoint, I don't like the notion that, as Member Jackson said, that you're dumping traffic out onto Drew and you're having traffic come in on, off Drew. The fact that you might be 60 feet from single-family homes is helpful, not persuasive. The fact that you're six feet off of Fuller when the city standard is 35 feet is bothersome. The building height at three stories, 30, 35 feet bothersome. The, the, the coverage of the building itself is probably the most bothersome thing for me. So, you'll have to go back and decide what you want to do, but when I look at the comprehensive plan, and it says the city can consider a PUD, which would be required here for a project that includes affordable housing that are below 80% AMI, in locations guided at appropriate densities and land use categories as shown on the future land use map, I think about whether this project meets or fails that test, and I can't help but think that it fails the test as to the density and land use on the proposed site. And then when you start thinking about rezoning and the requirements for rezoning, is it, the first question we ask under the code is, "Is it consistent with the comprehensive plan? Will, will it be detrimental to the properties surrounding the tract? Will, will not, you know, will it result in an overly intensive land use? Will it result in undue traffic congestion and traffic hazards? Will it conform to the provisions of this section and other applicable provisions of the code? And then will it have a proper relationship between the proposed improvements, existing structures, open space, and natural features of the neighborhood?" It's hard to, for me to see how you get there, really hard. So it doesn't, I don't think even behooves me to even pick at the site plan or pick at the architecture. I mean, you would, you've, you've done it the right way, you've just brought an idea, but it's, and I, I'm all for finding the right place. I left that Walk with the Mayor on Saturday, thinking the first person I needed to call was a woman named Anne Swenson, who was on the council with many of us for about 12 years. And she's now on the Edina Housing Foundation Board. And the Housing Foundation Board has looked for and found locations for completely affordable units, at 30% of AMI and above. It has looked for and found locations for senior affordable housing. And I wanted to call her and tell her, "You start looking for locations for housing for folks with disabilities, particularly our young people, that so many of our families want to keep close, and have all those advantages of living in Edina that are, that we all, that we all appreciate, and are the reasons that we live here." So, that's, that's a conversation I haven't had yet, but I'm going to have it. If the church should decide that they need some financial assistance to make everything work over there, at the church itself, you know, I think there's other things they can think about, and that is taking some of these properties and, or taking some of the property they have and doing the same thing that's being done in the rest of the neighborhood, and that's create single-family housing. So it's consistent with the rest of the neighborhood. I think the neighbors would, would like that. And as I said, there may be some support for that lot right on France Avenue, across from the church, but what you're proposing is something that I, I couldn't support. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor, council members. Appreciate your time.
Thank you for being here this evening. Yeah, folks, we've got another sketch plan. I think we'll just take a five-minute recess. Director Teague.
Yes, a site I think you're all familiar with, but Councilmember Staunton especially. Located 7,200, 7250 France on the west side, properties guided in the comprehensive plan for office residential use. Zoned PUD, so we did a rezoning of this site to PUD back in 2018. This is a look at the development itself. That was approved, but, but never constructed. It was to be two six-story buildings with 299 units of apartments. 20% of the units were to be affordable. There was 30,000 square feet of office and retail on the main levels, and there was a row of townhomes here on the west side. The key features of that project is the woo-nurf that runs through the site north-south, a lot of public space, green space, pedestrian, bike through the site, both east-west and north-south, the townhomes being kind of a buffer to the neighborhood, and then quite an extensive green space along 72nd and a reconstruction of part of that roadway. But again, that project was not built, but that PUD zoning still exists on the site. So as it exists today, that's the only thing that can be built on that site, unless we do a complete rezoning of the site. So what the applicant is proposing is two structures, a 45,000-square-foot grocery store on the corner of 72nd and France, and then 130,000-square-foot office building on the south side. Quickly move around the site, the developer will provide a little more detail to this, but 50-foot setback along France, 30-foot setback along 72nd, consistent with the Design Experience Guidelines and the code. They're suggesting a future woo-nurf north, north-south through the site. Look at the, at the site plan, so it's more of a traditional, and again, it is sketch plan, so not a whole lot of detail provided, but it's not appearing like there's any type of pedestrian movement through the site, just a standard suburban-style parking lot and drive aisles. So this request would require a rezoning from that planned unit development to probably another PUD for the site. The previous zoning on the site was planned office district. So again, with our pyramid of discretion, with the rezoning, we would have, the city has complete discretion to approve or deny. Just quickly, again, not a lot of detail with specifics on the setbacks, but the one issue is, there's a loading facility proposed on 72nd Street that doesn't meet setbacks, so they would be looking for some flexibility there. Building height, the previous, or the, the height overlay district is four stories, 48 feet. That project that was approved for the site was six stories and 67 feet. They would be needing flexibility on floor area ratio, going back to the planned office district, 50% is the floor area ratio maximum. This project is proposing about 77%. And then flexibility on the number of parking stalls as well. So some of the discussion issues for the, for the city council to consider, again, it's the main issue is the rezoning. Under the old zoning district, planned office district, the maximum allowed square footage is 113,000 square feet. And the only use that's allowed in that office, in that office district is office and medical use. So retail under that zoning would not be allowed. It is suggested as an allowed use in the comprehensive plan, again, designated office residential, but the, the code or the comp plan talks about limited retail and not including big-box retail. The comp plan doesn't define exactly what big-box retail is. Staff did some research on the code to try to determine a specific definition, lots of different ideas out there. In general, it talks about big-box retail as being anything larger than 50,000 square feet. That's not a hard and fast definition, but I did find that consistently at different sites. They're often described as Walmarts, K-Marts, Target, Home Depot, IKEA, Best Buy type, type structures. Again, this, I didn't find that list, a grocery store listed within a big box. Nonetheless, it is a big, single-use retail building. The woo-nurf and, and some of the Design Experience Guidelines. Mick Johnson did provide a review for, for the council to consider. Some of his main concerns are the, the street rooms, that public space in between buildings, beefing that up. In terms of building materials and facade, again, sketch plan, not a lot of detail to the, to the proposed buildings. The applicant has indicated that they would be able to meet the, the architectural standards on the street for the 75% transparency and the building materials. I mentioned the truck entrance as an issue as well. So with that, I will stop there, answer any questions you might have, and the developer is here to make a presentation as well.
Member Staunton's got a question or two for you.
Can you go back to slide 18? Is that, that's the medical office building? Is there one, is there a chart for the grocery store? Or is this the whole? This is just the office building, right?
The setbacks.
So, the grocer, I assume, is one story?
The grocer is one story, yes.
Okay. So, so when you talk about the building height, you're talking about the...
Oh, the building height, I'm talking about the medical, correct.
And then, then you've got the kind of setbacks going all around both parcels, is that the idea?
I do, yeah. The setback on 72nd for the grocer is 35 feet.
Okay, all right, thanks.
Do you know the square footage of some of the other grocery stores in the neighborhood, like Lund's Barley's across the street, Supertarget, Cub?
Yeah, I, I don't, off the top of my head, I can do a little research here as we go through.
I can tell you, Councilmember Anderson and I had an exchange the other day, and I was out in Excelsior, where we built the Kowalskis a few years ago. It's 14,500 square feet. So this is three times the size of that.
Other questions? Yes?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So can you give us just sort of a high-level explanation as to why the previous plan failed?
Reasons that, that I've been told, one of the main factors is the, this site sits low, so it takes a lot of runoff from adjacent properties. It's kind of a big basin and collects all of that. So dealing with stormwater on this site is a huge expense. I think even more than they had anticipated. And just the, the cost of building materials as, you know, after this project was approved, it just, they weren't able to get the financing.
So, how do we, I guess that's the, the Creek District that would be, Minnehaha Creek District would determine the stormwater, is that, who's the regulatory body on that?
Nine Mile, I think.
Yeah, Nine Mile Creek.
Okay. And, so you don't really have a review on, on the stormwater?
Not at this point, no.
Not at this point, okay, great, thank you.
There's a great, there's a great historical picture of, of that parking lot filled with water back years ago that illustrates the stormwater issue.
All right, other questions for Director Teague at this point in time? Mr. Carlson, welcome back. Member Pierce, go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Can you just confirm, I think I just got a little confused, what was, what's currently approved? I see proposed, but...
So this is what was approved for the site back in 2018.
Okay.
That was not constructed. So this is really the only thing that can be built on this site.
Okay.
Through that PUD zoning. So this is really the only thing that can be built on this site through that PUD zoning.
And then when this was approved, go back to the, your chart. And so the one you, what you just showed was that, is that reflected on here? I assume it's city standard, okay.
Yeah, that's the PUD 16 standards here.
Okay, and then proposed, oh, got it, okay.
And then the PUD was the previous zoning district.
Gotcha, okay, thank you.
Mr. Carlson, did you want Mr. Stafford to do the presentation? Is that what you, is that what you guys have decided, your team?
Thanks, Kerry.
All right, I don't know.
I just wanted to introduce myself first of all. And I'm not a hired stand-in by Ted, by the way, Mr. Mayor. But pleasure to meet all you. My name's Drew Stafford. Councilmembers, thank you, Kerry, again, with Orion Investments at 6550 York. And before we turn over to the rest of the presentation, like I said, I wanted to formally introduce myself to you all. I'm a resident of Edina. I've lived here for about 10 years now. My kids go to school here, planning, raising my family here. So I'm very grateful and looking forward to the opportunity to work on this project and hearing your thoughts and feedback and, you know, working towards making something special here. Knowing the history of the site, hopefully work on that flooding problem you had seen. And that being said, also earlier tonight, once again, I'll try to make this as quick as possible because I understand how tonight and Planning Commission before went. Hearing the importance of neighborhood outreach and getting the neighborhood involved. We emphasized that and wanted to take advantage of that opportunity to reach out to the neighborhood surrounding the area about 1,000 feet. Specifically, it was informally led by the South Cornelia Neighborhood Association. And this presentation that we had in front of them was very well-received as it is. So I wanted to state that for the record as well. So with us tonight, we have Nate Anger and our team at ESG. And Nate will walk us through some finer points. And then afterwards, my partner Ted Carlson will be able to answer any questions you guys have specifically. Thank you, and thanks again for your time.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Councilmembers. Thanks for having me. Thanks for staying up late with us. It is after most of our bedtimes, I'm sure. And I will make this quick because I know we all want to talk to Ted anyway. So we'll just roll through this. But I do want to underscore that we did have a great interaction with the neighborhood. And some of the notable comments that came out of that conversation were specifically, several people said this was the best use of the site they've seen presented thus far. And that's including what Kerry just showed you as the approved PUD. So take that for what you will, we'll walk through this. We also had the pleasure of meeting with the Planning Commission last week and got a lot of really great feedback. So I think we want to just indicate that we heard that and kind of summarize what we heard out of that meeting. Because I think we found that we were very much in alignment with the feedback we got from the Planning Commission. Many of those comments, I'm sure, you'll probably share with us tonight. So as we go through this, I kind of point out maybe some of the feedback that we received and how we've internalized that and how we anticipate potentially moving this forward. First and foremost, we looked at kind of overall site here. And based on the different uses surrounding this area, we've got a lot of grocery stores, a lot of retail, a lot of housing. This felt like kind of the perfect node to us to create a mixed-use development. It sits at kind of a confluence. It's kind of a knuckle in between all of these. So it seemed like a great place to bring everything together. And so that's where the idea of the grocer and the office came up. As we'll talk about maybe in a second here, we're very confident, I think, with the office usage on the 7250, which is the south parcel. The grocer is something that we're still working through, and it's possible that that parcel could become something else. But the intent is still that this would be a mixed-use development. So here's images of the site. Unfortunately, not flooded with water, but you can imagine what that would look like, filled with water there. And then here are kind of quintessentially the worst possible pictures that you could find of this site at the worst time of year. So that was not intentional, it just happened to be the time of year we got them. But you can see, these buildings are, have not aged particularly well. And I don't think are probably representative of what Edina would like for this area. So we recognize that and are hopeful to be part of that solution. So I think a lot of this, Director Teague has gone over here, so I won't spend too much time on the project goals. But I'll just dig a little deeper into the site plan here. So this is actually a combination of two parcels, 7200 on the north and 7250. So they are separate. And right now, we're looking at them together. But depending on how all the market works out, there is a possibility that we could phase this development over time. Specifically about the stormwater question, we are fortunate enough to have the civil team that was involved in the previous plan on our team. And to bring a little more insight into that, the stormwater is very, very expensive to deal with. I think a large portion of what sunk the last site was the fact that they had to do a bunch of underground vaults. We have, because of the formulation of our site and not moving as far to the west towards the residential neighborhood, we've left a natural area for the stormwater mitigation, which has allowed us to avoid the underground vaults that were so costly the last project. And we can talk more about how we treat that. But essentially, what this project is, is it's two buildings sitting on top of a podium. So the site fortunately is kind of a bowl. That's what makes the stormwater such a problem. But from a parking standpoint, we're able to create a parking podium that is essentially buried. The top of the parking podium will be at the grade of France. So from the experience of France and from the neighborhood, you will not see a parking ramp. It'll basically be a flat lot with two buildings built on top. Now, we do have some surface parking, but that brings us to, I think, one of the first comments that we received pretty broadly at the Planning Commission, which was, and Director Teague kind of noted this. It, right now, feels like a very suburban experience. That would not be our intent. We plan on creating more pedestrian connection. I know we showed a future woo-nurf. I think our team strategy is a little bit up in the air about how we can create that meaningful connection. Whether it's a woo-nurf connecting north-south, which we aren't entirely convinced yet is the appropriate way to really bring people into the site immediately versus more east-west connection directly to the neighborhood and the adjacent residents who would likely be using these properties more in a meaningful way immediately. So I think that's a really good area of discussion. Hopefully, you all have comments about that and where that pedestrian activity really wants to occur. Because we do have France on one side and we do have two sites that are kind of sitelocked on north and south. Just some quick diagrams here, and we can certainly talk more. But I think to reinforce what Director Teague said, this is sketch plan. So the diagrams aren't really representative of the articulation of the building. Certainly, we understand with our history, this team's history, in Edina, we understand the Experience Guidelines and can meet the requirements for setbacks, street room typologies, and quality of materials and transparency. That would be something that you would see in the next iteration were we to bring this forward into a formal application. And then I think the Planning Commission found this to be a very helpful exhibit. Certainly, the neighborhood did. But what this is, is kind of a conflation of three different conditions. So this top north-south, south-site section would be from the perspective of the western neighborhood looking towards France. The red buildings show what currently exists, the height and the volume of those buildings. The really light blue buildings represent what was approved in 2018 and is the current PUD designation. And then the darker blue and green indicate what we're proposing. So you can see in terms of kind of our proposal from what exists, there's not a meaningful difference in terms of mass and height. But there is quite a significant difference between what was proposed in 2018 massing and what we are proposing. Now, I think that was very appealing to the neighborhood. Obviously, they have different objectives than everybody else does. And so one of the other things we heard very loud and clear from the Planning Commission is that there's a concern about density on the site. So we heard that, we're not quite sure what the solution to that is yet. But that's certainly something that we're open to having dialogue on. And then some site diagrams, Director Teague implied the connection to a loading dock on Seventy-second. We're still in early days, we don't actually have a grocer plan. We understand that if, you know, that were a condition, we can certainly reorient it. If a grocery store indeed did go forward, we would not have the loading dock on that area. We could reorient all that stuff. We are maintaining the right-in, right-out along France Avenue as it currently exists. We think that's an important connection to address one of the other hot items from tonight, which was cut-through traffic. So we're trying to avoid kind of the cut-through from Gallagher up to Seventy-second with maintaining the right-in, right-out.
Did you get any feedback, did you get any feedback, Mr. Anger, from the neighborhood on Seventy-second, on right-in, right-out? Because that was, I recall that was an issue in one of the prior iterations.
I remember hearing about that. I don't know, Mr. Mayor, exactly what they, but I remember that being a concern.
Okay, just keep that in the back of your mind, too. I think that that could be an issue on Seventy-second.
Yes, sir.
Especially truck traffic, you know what's going on.
Yeah, and I think, you know, all that stuff's still in flex. So I think, you know, we definitely have the ability to modify and shape. Thank you for that comment. The future woo-nurf, as we talked about, I think this team is certainly open to that conversation. And Mr. Johnson, in his report, had some really great ideas on how to even take the existing plan and create kind of a more pedestrian street, if that were desirable, for that to be the primary pedestrian connectivity. Again, I think there is some discussion about where it's most meaningful, both now and in the future. So I think we're excited to have that conversation. And this exhibit, I think, further reinforces, I guess, where our, you know, questions and exploration really are as it relates to future woo-nurf, in that we have a site bordering us on the north and a site bordering us on the south that likely won't be transitioning to any sort of connectivity for quite some time. So while creating a woo-nurf, I think is a really great idea, and we are fully in support of creating pedestrian connectivity. We're just not exactly sure that that's the right place to do it versus maybe really more engaging to the west and maybe using that stormwater area as more of an amenity. Again, early days, we're not exactly sure what that is yet. Just some quick diagrams that show existing pedestrian connectivity. There was some great commentary about the connectivity along Gallagher all the way down to the bike infrastructure that happens, yeah, happens further west. And we think that's a great opportunity to maybe engage more bike parking with all the bike parking we saw outside today from everybody who biked here, so. And then getting to kind of the last slides here, this is showing kind of the existing condition of the site. And then we overlay on top of that kind of our current condition. So you can see, we're really pulling away from the existing neighborhood and really think that it's an opportunity to really celebrate that open area. With that, Ted, unless you have any additional comments you want to add?
No, all due respect for the time and for everybody who's involved in this process. You know, I think it's, let's just get to some dialogue and questions so that we can do this as efficiently as possible. Is that fair? Thank you, Nate.
Good, thanks, Mr. Carlson. Thanks, Mr. Anger. Member Anderson.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Hi. How you doing tonight? And this may be, some of these questions may be as much for Mr. Anger as they are for you, Mr. Carlson. At least, at least be close. In any event, number one, thanks for putting some thought into this site. It's difficult to drive by and see, and it needs to be rectified. And I appreciate that. And I also want to commend you on very proactively reaching out to the neighborhood. I know that they appreciated it. And so I appreciate you doing that as well. Okay, Mr. Anger, during the Planning Commission presentation, you mentioned a couple of times, actually, that you can meet the South Dale Design Guidelines. And, you know, I've got a couple of questions on that.
Great.
And I just want to mention that what we're doing tonight is we've got a large footprint on the 7200 site and then a smaller footprint on the 7250 on the... So actually, Director Teague has helped me in putting together a few of the slides, some slides that were actually pulled out of the packet. If we could pull that up, Director Teague, that would be helpful. Because there's questions that I think come up about the guidelines that I want to just illustrate as much as anything else. This, this shows the site plan. It's actually your egress plan. But what it shows here is a regular, a very straightforward, conventional in-and-out as you're proposing. If we go to the next slide there, we can also see where the future woo-nurf is indicated. Now, the staff report mentions, which is accurate, that the woo-nurf is pictured here is really not even on your site. Not all of it, a proportion is not.
Three-quarters, I believe, and a quarter is on the other site.
Yeah.
That's correct.
And one of the questions that is brought up in the staff report is, and also in Mick Johnson's comments, when would that be done? If it's not done now, where in the future would it be done? And we can't even really, based on this particular site plan, you can't even really be sure that you're ever going to be able to. You don't know that that's going to be acquired or that they would be cooperative in doing that. Okay, so if we go, if we jump ahead here a little bit, these are, and you're familiar with these, I know you've read them. These are the 10 Things to Remember in the Design Guidelines. And I'm going to ask some questions. Number one about number one, which is the 200 by 200 block. The number five here is about designated transition zones, which you are squarely directly in. And maintaining the quality of life without restricting growth in other parts of the district. And last, picking three out of 10, is transparency on the ground level facing the public realm. And it's key to the individual experience. And you've addressed that even earlier this evening, and I'm quite positive that you can do that. Why don't we just jump ahead here a little bit? And this is really just an indication of where we are on the, on the, on the, on the site. And it's from the Design Experience Guidelines as well. So it, this is actually page 20, I believe, from the Design Experience Guidelines. It illustrates the potential West Promenade with the transition to the Cornelia Neighborhood and stresses special sensitivity in this zone. The next slide is page 21 of those same guidelines. And I wanted to pull that up because it's pretty clear when we take a look at them that, and especially in this transition zone, we've got a 60-foot limit here. And one of your buildings is, is it 74, 75? And the other one's actually very low, at 34.
That's correct.
And it reminded me of the proposal that came forward on 66th and France. Because they were having massing problems on the site, but they didn't really get as much bang for the buck on France. And I mentioned this because I think that you can do that and still create the density that you're seeking. Just go a little further here. The next slide shows your existing, existing site plan and its transition. Again, discussing transition and the 20-foot setback. Next one, this is from Mick Johnson. And this relates to the field office review. And one of the suggestions that he had, and I just thought it was such a darn good idea. I wanted to bring it to your attention tonight. He was suggesting flipping the buildings. And in doing so, by bringing, if it's going to be a grocery, and, you know, Member Staunton's surveillance in Excelsior kind of added to the possibility that at a 14-5 footprint for a specialty grocer, even if it's 20,000, that presents such great opportunities in a reduced footprint here on the, that's the south side of the site, that it allows you to stack above it. And that's what, that's one of the things that Commissioner Bennett was talking about. Commissioner Alkar stressed the woo-nurf possibility. In this configuration, that absolutely allows that. It allows the woo-nurf to be created. It also gives the possibility in the future, if there is less demand for parking. Nobody knows exactly what that's going to be. And most businesses feel like they need to get the parking that they're requiring to operate the business today. So in this configuration, you could actually drop to 60 feet your office tower and still stack above the grocer or even adjacent to it with a smaller footprint to get the density that you're requiring. it with a smaller footprint to get the density that you're requiring, and also would tend to break up the, the frontage on France, because the 200-foot, the 200-foot goal that we're seeking there in each building configuration, that's far easier to receive with the shorter footprint there. So I just wanted to bring that to your attention, because I, I believe that this is and can be a huge demand site and is conducive to biking, it is conducive to walking. And you'll draw a ton of people from the neighborhood. You know, we looked at Kowalski's last night, but one of the draws, not to endorse Kowalski's, but one of the draws that they provide is people come and go in and out of that grocery store all day, every day, and they're not in there shopping for groceries. They go in there because there's so much dining available and so much takeout. So given your transparency on the street to France and given the access that the Wunorf would create, you're going to draw a ton of people through there, no question about it, for that type of usage. And then an adjacent building are stacking up over that. I don't know what the mechanical demands in a grocery store are. You've got a lot of venting, you've got a lot of air movement, ducting, I know, I know that. But if you, the 60-foot, the 60-foot frontage on France, it's also, one of the design guidelines is to drop that to a 20-foot transition in back. You can achieve that so easily with this type of configuration, give yourself room for future development in the back, and also provide all the parking that you need right now. So I'm just throwing that out. I'm not trying to redesign your site, but maybe just a little bit. But I do want to throw that out, because I think you're on to something here, that it could be extremely attractive. When the Chamber of Commerce begins to consider the Edina as a medical destination, then it makes all the sense in the world to get a new medical building on a site that supported it in the past. At least, it seems like that to me. Incorporating other usages into that that make that attractive makes a lot of sense to me. So I wish you the best of luck and hope you come back with something that really ties in together. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. There's a lot about this that I do like. Actually, I think Member Anderson's suggestions of being able to leverage that Wunorf to just further more traffic, that pedestrian feel, I think is pretty cool. That's a neat idea. That area definitely does need some redevelopment. And so I like the way this is presented. I had an architectural question, and it's the only one that I have. When you talk about the parking and on, what slide is that? You can kind of see it's, slide 13, I think it is.
Okay.
You can kind of see.
Strongly.
From that side view.
This, this one right here?
Yeah, that one.
Okay, you got it.
And so my question is just architecturally, like, how, how is that done? And is that two levels of parking? Yeah.
The parking ramp underneath?
Yeah.
Yeah. So the site's pretty unique in that the north side, which would be 7200, has about 18 feet of grade differential between 72nd and where the existing asphalt lives. So that's plenty for us to create essentially two floors of parking at nominally nine foot six or something like that with very little cut. Now, on the.
Cut meaning taking dirt off.
Yeah, sorry. So cut meaning taking dirt off site. Now, on the south side, on 7250, that ramp already exists, and it's, I think, fully three feet even lower than that asphalt lot. And additionally, Gallagher is about five feet higher than 72nd. So we get a kind of additional balance. So it kind of works to our advantage.
So just the natural terrain allows for that. And then, so is that technically below grade parking? I like it.
Yeah. Well, it's a great question, because it's defined different ways. But from a code perspective, maybe is where you're going, it would be below grade parking. And just technically, the challenge for us is that it will need to be ventilated, because it will be essentially buried on three sides of it with only one open side.
It would need to be ventilated.
Probably, yeah. We'd have to run the calculations, but.
And then, last question, because of the steel parking, though, because of the, the natural terrain, is the price per parking spot, since it's below grade, is it still substantially cheaper because of that than if you had to create below grade parking?
That's another great question. I don't want to get too far on my depth here. But speaking from my experience, when you have something like this where you're basically, it's kind of half of above-grade parking ramp, like some of it's below, we usually target around $65 a square foot. But you've all seen what's happening in the market right now. So I would say it's going to be less expensive than a similar below-grade parking lot where you're doing all that cut.
Right. Okay.
Yeah.
Good question. Thank you. Thank you. I think this may be a good time for me to just interject a little bit, that this site starts with some really unique civil engineering challenges. And that was adhered with the stormwater, and then it's basically a bowl. So when you sit out at the site, you drive down, you can, you can see that. So what we're starting from the basis of planning is with the current, the previous civil engineering group, the previous landscape group, to build upon what they already know about the site, so that we can try to minimize cost impacts by using the topography to our advantage.
When you're talking stormwater management, you're talking Member Staunton's game. He wants to go next.
Oh, perfect. This is a tarpon drainage slide.
Yeah. I'm, I'm just, I. The one-story grocery store just isn't doing it for me. I mean, you're fresh off pushing the ceiling across the street, and now you're pushing the floor on this side. I don't get it. So I like what.
I can answer that.
All right, go ahead.
If you'd like. You know, we've been obviously very active in this community, and we are trying to balance what we believe current market forces are versus future. And with not only the project at 7001 France, but other projects throughout the city, there's a lot of housing coming. And so we've kind of cast our bet and cast our die that we've got great sites already that we already own, already approved, and we're starting construction on. So from our seat, as it relates to housing, we believe there's plenty in the pipeline today. As it relates to office, Drew and I have engaged office experts throughout the community. CBRE is our listing team at 7001 France. After tonight, we'll be moving forward and working on bringing 7250, the office site, to market with another great office partner. Office markets had a lot of challenges lately, obviously. We believe that the community's well-positioned to be the office of the future, both on sites we've got and other sites that are, you know, in front of the council now are coming and that the chambers involved in. We've heard over and over again that there may be some concerns about additional office beyond what we have at 70th and what we have here. So frankly, what we're trying to do is find a balance between market, neighborhood, and city on the 7200 site. And through our different projects we've had throughout the city, we've had many conversations with local and national grocers. And so that's the impetus for bringing the grocery store to your attention tonight, is that we believe there's demand, we believe it's something we can get done. And as far as square footages go, the current Whole Foods is 33,000 square feet. I do not have the Lunds-Birley's off the top of my head, but I believe it's plus or minus 42,000 square feet. I'm very familiar with Kowalski's and Excelsior, and it's a fantastic store. But I don't believe that that's a sustainable economic model for the future. And I would suspect that if that type of grocer was looking in our city, they would be looking at 30,000 feet plus. So with that in mind, this is our best attempt at balancing what we think is a great blend of current and future market demands. But to Nate's point earlier, we're very confident in 7250 today, 7200 grocer, maybe something different in the future that's for us to try to figure out, right? So.
Yeah. Well, I mean, I don't think it fits the Design Guidelines. I think Member Anderson did a nice job of making some suggestions about how you might be able to make that work. I think that Kowalski's and Excelsior seems to be doing a robust business, and I think they're pretty confident about the future. So. And, and to the comments that were made at the Planning Commission about, you know, it is a big box. I mean, it's big, and it's a box, and it's one story. And it's not going to be designed for people who are going to duck in and duck out. It's going to be designed for the big jumbo grocery cart that you're going to take the SUV to the store and pick up and go about. And I just think that's not, that's entirely inconsistent with what we've talked about in the Design Experience Guidelines for that area. So, so I'm not, I'm not wild about that. The medical office, I, you know, I think that, that works. It is noteworthy that it is taller than, than what was proposed there before, which is interesting, because we had to fight for every, every foot of that back then. So I don't know what's going to happen with that. But, and then, you know, along France, I like what you're doing there. But then, then the Wunorf, you know, I get that it's not to the north or the south yet, but it won't ever be to the north or the south if you don't start somewhere. And that's why you have to start somewhere. And I love the suggestions that Mr. Johnson made in his comments. So, so, you know, I'm glad that something's happening there, but it's not, it's not, I certainly don't think the north side of the site is, is meeting what we're looking for. So, thanks.
Thank you. Rejection.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So when I looked at this, the, as you know, I've done a deep dive into the guidelines recently, and I don't see the grid at all. And then, as I started looking at who are the neighbors and everything, I have a really difficult time navigating this by foot. And when I talked to the chairs of the Southdale Group, they said the, it's the foot plan and the pedestrian traffic that's the most important, and the buildings are kind of irrelevant. And I just am not seeing that in this layout. And I like the idea of flipping the two sites so that it creates that. If I lived in the Cedars, I wouldn't walk to this grocery store. I'd have to cross over traffic, and, and it's awkward. And, and I guess that's maybe why the, the door is on the southwest corner there. But I'm, I looked at the neighboring sites, the Sunrise of Edina, I doubt is going to be walking over to go to the grocery stores. But the Cedars, I can totally see that. But it seems intimidating to me to walk there. But if it were flipped, it would be easier. So I was trying to think, who's going to walk over here? How are we going to get foot traffic? And where's it going to be coming from? And I just couldn't, my imagination couldn't get there. And so, you know, I don't see that really strong pedestrian experience. And it's really important to me to look at who the neighboring buildings are. And the, you know, obviously, we've got offices to the south, that's less important. But still, what if you wanted to run over to the grocery store for lunch, if it is a take-in, take-out kind of place? It's not an easy, I mean, you can, but you got to, when we get the sidewalks there. So that, that was the first thing, was just how that 200-foot grid goes. And then that feeling of having four sides to the buildings. And, and you said you will look at that and everything. But it's really an important part of the guidelines, is that four sides of everything. I really worried about stormwater on this site, and I know you are, too. The stuff on France Avenue that you've suggested, are those kind of rain gardens? Are they ponds? Can you give me a little bit more about what you're thinking about for water on France there?
Happy to. Yeah. We've engaged Civil Site Group and Confluence, who have done quite a bit of work in this area. And actually, we're part of the original team as well. So they have a pretty good handle on that. So the stuff along France will be part of the stormwater mitigation. It'd probably be not a significant portion of it, but it will contribute. By and large, the, the most of that will occur within the ponding area that exists today.
Okay. And that'll be big enough to.
It will actually have to be enlarged a little bit. I think they're digging deeper a little bit to make that happen. But.
Yeah. The, the stormwater pond would get larger. And if you drive there today, or at least a few days ago, it was dry. So it's typically dry and then fills during rain events. So what we've represented is to preserve all the trees and vegetations on the west, enlarge it, deepen it to the east, and then berm and buffer and landscape to provide that setback to the single family and twin homes adjacent to the west. Does that help?
Yes, it does. Thank you. I guess, you know, the other thing is, the Wunorf is a great idea. Sitting and looking at how this can all work out, we've got that, Lynnmar Basin is very close. But again, I just, I had a really hard time with the pedestrian experience. And that, to me, is the key. If I'm on foot, how am I going to navigate this site? And, and making a smaller grocery store where you are at pop in and pop out, I really like that idea. Let's see, the height, the previous one was 67 feet. I'm comfortable going taller than that, because this is a transition zone. And I guess the other thing is, let's see. Yeah, I think that that's primarily it. My colleagues have covered most of my other points. But, but I just, my imagination isn't getting me walking through there. So thank you.
No, appreciate that. I think when we come back, you'll see a much more developed and robust plan, touching on the points we've heard tonight. One thing for Director Teague that our team was thinking about as it related to height, the first floor height is mandated in the Southdale Guidelines as 20 feet, correct?
Correct.
Yeah. So what we're trying to do is provide that 20-foot height on the first floor within standard offices above. So when we saw that six stories and 67 feet, we were kind of scratching our heads how that may have worked within the 20 feet on the first floor. It was just a question we had. So.
Okay. So, yeah, I guess the other thing is just where the loading dock is. I want to make sure that, again, the pedestrian experience is safe. So, thank you.
You're going to leave here with a variety of opinions. I can see that coming.
What the, we were hoping for, frankly, and what the process is for. So.
Yeah. Well, I think it does help you think things through. I'll leave it on slide 22 there. I think for me, I really like what you've done with that stormwater management idea instead of that old vaulting system. I think that could be really quite a, quite a site feature. And with what we're doing on parking and what we're talking about relative to parking, I could even see where we give up some parking adjacent to the pond.
Yes.
And create a, create a walkway, bikeway through there. And maybe that becomes, maybe not as wide as you might have for a Wunorf, where you've got autos and pedestrians sharing space. But it could be a wonderful piece of trail right up past there with some really fabulous amenities. And I think, well, you got that 50-foot setback on France Avenue, which you honored down at 70th and France. And I think that's, I'd be interested in seeing what you come up with there. You know, sketch plan requires a little leap of faith, and, and that faith has been justified in the past with Orion, with your group. So I'm, and I'm not off put by the notion of a one-story grocery store, me personally, because I know what some of the things are out there across the country that are coming in terms of possibilities and how people buy groceries and what, what it could look like. And, and I know that you understand well the design elements involved and appropriate to Edina and the materials usages. And so to see everything blocked out like this is, it looks really suburban. And you said that, Mr. Inger. But I, but I know you meant that in a way that it's only looking suburban right now.
That's correct. Thank you.
Yeah. And by the time we get done working on this thing, it's not going to look suburban. It's going to embrace all these things that people are talking. It's going to embrace all these things that people are talking to you about tonight. I'm actually really intrigued with that grocery store because I think about some of the things that are out there and companies that maybe want to be in this market where it revolutionizes how you shop. So I'm eager to see more downstream.
Thank you for that. Thank you for that, Mayor Houdlin. I mean, we intentionally didn't want to have a, wanted to avoid a discussion around the physical building design tonight based upon our experience in the fast and focus on what we've heard tonight. So from our seat, feedback's well received. Thank you. And we'll look forward to bringing something to you, hopefully, in the near future.
And I like the, I like the, this sequence of buildings, south to, north to south, is kind of what's there now. 7200 is low slung. 7250's got the medical building. And I'm, I'm comfortable with that sort of sequencing here, too. I think it makes probably the most sense from a site management standpoint. Okay, that's it for me.
Sorry, I didn't mean.
Anybody else have anything?
Thank you.
All right, thanks.
All right.
Okay. That's the heavy lifting for tonight, I think. Go on to managers' comments. I don't think anything's come in from a correspondent's standpoint. Thank you, Clerk Allison. Managers' comments, you got a couple of things you want to cover?
Yes, thank you, Your Honor. I had two reports that were included under my comments. But what I wanted to draw your attention to is one of the actions that was included in your consent agenda tonight was Resolution 2022-41, supporting something called the Helper Act. The Helper Act is, is really a bipartisan bill in both the U.S. Congress and in the Senate that's attempting to provide mortgage assistance in all different kinds of, of shapes and sizes to law enforcement, firefighters, ambulance crews, K-12 educators, to try to bring more of those, of those, what they would call, community helpers into the communities where they live. And so that's what that is. We, in Minnesota, Representative Angie Craig and Representative Dean Phillips are both part of this bipartisan coalition of, in the House and Senate that are backing this bill. They suggested that we might want to support it. And so that's what was on your agenda tonight. And that's all I've got.
All right.
So, Mr. Mayor, I guess I wanted to ask Member Pierce. We've got the update of the race and equity work plan. Are you satisfied with, with what you're seeing in the progress of that? Because I know it was really important for you with the racial justice, the racial justice work task force to get a plan and see things. And I was looking at that, reading it, and just sort of wanting to hear your two cents worth on where we're at.
Yes.
If you're not prepared tonight, that's okay. But maybe for the next time. But I just, I looked at that, so, you know, I'd love to hear, hear your perspective.
Okay. Go ahead, Scott. I was just going to offer, in a couple of weeks, we will have Heidi Lee coming and get to, for a special presentation to the council where she'll give a more annotated report on, and you'll be able to ask her some questions and get some follow-up, too.
Well, that's great. You know, what I, what I will say, and it's, it's odd that you asked me that question because this week I actually was thinking about the work that we started, which I think was back in 2018. And coming from the community event at the school and hearing that conversation, and I think all of us were there at that. And I actually was sitting there reflecting on the work plan. I walked in with Heidi Lee. And so I feel really good about just collectively what we're doing in that space. And I hadn't planned to talk about this at all, but you asked the question. We had some negative emails from, from folks, and I shouldn't call them negative, but emails where they are not ready to lean into change that makes us more inclusive, maybe I'll put it that way. And so I've exchanged with the, I had a couple of exchanges on that. But it makes me feel good about the work, not only that's in the work plan, but for me, when you really start to make change, you actually start to see efforts that aren't necessarily reflected in your work plan, but you start to see others doing work as well. And that's kind of how, that's where I feel like we are. Lot of effort, lot more to do. But I actually feel pretty good about where we are. Yeah.
Well, thank you.
Hey, you want to segue to your comments?
Sure, thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Talk about all that activity you've been attending.
Well, the event last Thursday was, was really interesting. And I hope that people who weren't there feel that they're invited. I think that's really important. There was, it was a really joyful event. You could just hear the noise. I talked to someone who was up on the balcony, and she couldn't see what we were saying. But she said just the noise and the energy of what people were saying was overwhelming. And it was, it was a really positive event. And if you said, oh, I don't want to go, it's not my thing, I hope that you enjoy. June 23rd is the next one of these events. One family, one city, right?
One town.
One town, yeah. One town, one family. I, I get it wrong every time. But it was, it was a really happy event. I'm looking forward to planting trees with Luther. He's also coming to my neighborhood park, to Walnut Ridge, on April 30th. And if you'd like to join me, I will be out planting trees there. And I also attended the Student Climate Summit on Saturday, which she did too, Mr. Mayor. And the student energy there was, was just fantastic. A lot of really interesting speakers. And they always do a nice job, and it's student-led, which is always so impressive. And so I want to thank the students for inviting us to that and putting on a really nice event. That's all.
Thanks. Member Anderson.
Thank you. I've been thinking tonight and earlier about the fact that we, the, the level of normalcy that we're beginning to experience again is, it's uplifting. To see this place packed tonight was rewarding to me, anyway. And, and we saw the same thing a couple of weeks ago. The fog's lifting. And people are saying, we're going to get back to this. And not only that, but we're fully participating. Nothing's held back. I, I think that's, that's, that's a great step. That's my only observation. It's just, it's good to be interactive.
Great, okay. Member Staunton.
I don't have a lot I want to thank. It's, you know, nights like this, it's, I mean, we have a great council, great staff, and it was, you know, everything is well done. These are tough decisions to make and tough things to balance. But I was really impressed with all of my colleagues. And our staff is just terrific, so, thanks, everybody.
Thank you. Member Pierce.
I, I will just add, to echo the comments, what I've started doing is just kind of holding up a mirror. And if you want to comment me personally or the council, and you're not being constructive, and we all want to be constructive, right? So I just hold the mirror up, and I say, is that, I'm sure you didn't mean that, but here's what we're trying to accomplish. And what I was alluding to from the Thursday meeting, there is a note, and it just dawned on me that I didn't copy the whole council. I think I just copied the mayor and the superintendent that we had received an email. And I just responded and said, hey, you know, we all felt safe. We had about 300 people there. Here's what we were trying to accomplish, and there's a seat at the table for you, right? So, and, and I think I said something like, in fact, the seat next to me, I'll keep it warm for you, or something like that. And I felt the response was fine with that. And it started out with, like, respectfully. And so, okay, we may not agree. But I do think what we're seeing is, is very encouraging. I thought today was, was awesome. To not agree, to know that people don't agree on the project that's standing in front of us, but can see the greater need. And so hopefully, we can lean into that and bring something greater to Edina capability that we don't have today. And to me, that's, I mean, that's where real change starts to happen. So I think it's pretty, it's very encouraging. I actually don't mind that it's almost 11 o'clock. I feel energized. I might not at 11:05, so let's not push it. But that's it, Mr. Mayor, thank you.
Yeah, I did see that note, back to the guy who was very angry that we've heard from before. I thought you did a beautiful job of just taking the, taking the vial out of the, out of the communications. I wrote back to him, too, but I just realized I forgot to copy you back in, so. Tried to follow your model, but not quite as effectively, I don't think. The other thing I was going to mention is when, Member Jackson and I were over at the Youth Climate Summit, they had a panel from noon to 1:00. There was a woman from McAllister, Grace Hancock from City. Who am I forgetting here?
Mike Manzel from Edina. He's a doctor's with the climate, connection between climate and health, and then from, a woman from the MPCA, and I forget her name.
MPCA person. And then Anna Martinez was the moderator.
Yes, yeah, she was fantastic.
Energy Environment Commission, a student member.
Yeah.
And I tell you, Grace, when I went up afterwards to thank everybody, the woman from McAllister said, where'd you find her? Where'd you find that Grace Hancock? She's unbelievable, really fantastic hire.
No, don't tell her. Don't tell people about her, all right?
I gave you credit for it. And anyway, she did a great job. Thanks for covering for me last meeting, as I recovered from COVID. And I appreciate that very much. And sometime we'll talk about the trip to Israel, which was incredible, really. What a, what a life, lifetime experience. From three days in and around Tel Aviv, down to Kibbutz, down to the Gaza Strip, memorials, cities, fast-growing cities, Tel Aviv mayor, up to the northern border in helicopters to look at the security problems up there, backed by helicopter to Jerusalem, and then a few days in Jerusalem. It was just an incredible experience, so, more later. Thanks. Anybody else have anything? Cause us to talk about? All right. Is there a motion to adjourn?
Second.
Got a motion by a Member Staunton, second by a Member Jackson to adjourn. Any further discussion, polls in favor of adjourning, say aye.
Aye.
Polls? Period, adjourned.